Good evening, everyone. The City Council is just finishing up a closed session. The regularly scheduled meeting will begin in a few minutes. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Council meeting will start in a few minutes. Just a little note, so everyone is aware. If you would like to speak on an item not on the agenda tonight, which is under public communication, please submit a speaker slip by 7:15 or raise your hand online. Again, it's 7:15 that you need to have your hands raised or submit your speaker slip for public communication for items not on the agenda tonight. For all other items on the agenda, you could go ahead and submit it before the item is being called. Thank you, and let's talk soon.
Thank you, everybody. We're just waiting for Councilmember Pappen, so just be a couple of minutes. Thank you for joining us, Gina.
Recording in progress.
Welcome to the July 9, 2024 Millbrae City Council meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order at 7:08 PM. City Clerk, would you please do a roll call?
Councilmember Snyder.
President.
Councilmember Pappen. Councilmember Cahalan.
Here.
Vice Mayor Goodman.
Here.
Mayor Feng.
Here.
All members of City Council are present.
Thank you so much. And for those who are able, would you please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you, please be seated. And if you're interested in speaking under public communication for items not on tonight's agenda, you must raise your hand on Zoom or submit your speaker slip to the City Clerk by 7:15 this evening. And again, raise your hand or submit your speaker slip by 7:15 for public communication. And for all other items, you can raise your hand when the title is ready to be heard. So the first up is a ceremonial presentation, and we're here, thank you very much for the Rotary, and we're here to recognize the Rotary Club of Millbrae for the very, very successful Rotary Mayor's Cup collaborations. I have your proclamation here. And whereas the Rotary Club of Millbrae's mission is to improve the lives of others through service, promote high ethical standards, implement successful community vocational and international services projects, and support Rotary International and its program. And whereas the Rotary Club of Millbrae is the club that can and has a strong track record for completing projects that benefits the Millbrae community. And whereas the city of Millbrae recognizes the Rotary Club of Millbrae for hosting the fifth annual Millbrae Rotary Club Golf Tournament on June 3, 2024. And whereas the event raised $16,779.78 to fund the Millbrae Recreation Center Youth Scholarship and over $14,000 for Millbrae Rotary Club youth service projects. These funds will expand programming access to our community members who need support, especially our youth. So now therefore, we, the members of Millbrae City Council, do hereby command the Rotary Club of Millbrae and thank them for their service and commitment to the Millbrae community. And we're glad to have the Rotarians, David Burris, Lisa Burris, and Joe Teresi, Sherri Teresi, Bijri Gladwin, and Walt Gladwin, and Christine Barasar. And Christine, would you like to come up and would you like to say a few words? Absolutely. You're certainly welcome to have your board joining you. And we're a former mayor, Jennifer Fogarty here as well.
Can I just have the Rotarians come up, please? Even Chief Eamon, and I know Mike is here somewhere. Hello, Mike. I would like to, and you can come over. I just keep speaking, so we'll keep going on the time. I would like to thank the city of Millbrae. I know it's a joint project from the very beginning, but it was, I should say, we went through ups and downs. We came up high up. We doubled our, I shall call it profits, right? After costs taken out of our revenue. But really, it's profit for our youth. We came up together with a creative idea this year of where will the funds will go to that will benefit our youth. We have almost half of it to the Rotary Youth Scholarships and programs. And then with the Recreation Department, they were able to suggest to us an unmet need, which is the scholarships for the recreation. So that, we were very excited, and I would have to thank all the Rotarians here with us because, and also many of you. We have your video on your teeing shot, Mayor Anders, and I know Angelina helped us out too, and I know Gina was there too. So all of you, thank you so much for the partnership. I also want to say it's not just, you know, partnership because we're Rotary and because you're the city, but also Sherri, our secretary, did an analysis of what each party brought to the table, and it was really complimentary on the type of donors that you guys brought in and that we brought in. And so the talents and skills that everyone put to the table is a true partnership. So we are very thankful for the opportunity, and we're very happy and thankful for everyone that joined the Rotary Mayor's Golf Cup Tournament.
Thank you so very much. Before I ask you to join us at a podium for a photo, does any council member want to say anything? Go ahead.
I just want to thank you all for all that the Rotary does. You all are committed to supporting our community, to working together as your own community and always educating yourselves and learning and growing. And the service that you do in Millbrae, it also just brings people together and brings joy and fun and community building to all that we do. So thank you so much, and I really enjoy all my time at the Rotary events with all of you. It's really enriching, so thank you so much.
Anyone else? Okay, would you please join us for a photo?
One of those years.
Thank you, Rotary, for all you do, and may the next Mayor Cup be just as successful, if not more, successful. Thanks, all of you. And next up, it's also, it's heartwarming to have our own hometown hero, a combination for Public Works employee, Mr. Glenn Gonzalez. Whereas Glenn Gonzalez started working for the city of Millbrae in November 16, 1990, over 33 years, and commenced his tenure with Millbrae Public Works Department. And whereas Glenn Gonzalez started in the collections division and worked in the streets and water divisions, and ended his tenure in the storms division as the city's second street sweeper operator. And whereas Glenn Gonzalez provided an important mentoring to fellow coworkers and ensured that all areas of the cities were safe and clean. And whereas Glenn Gonzalez is a model public works storm street sweeper, prioritizing roadway cleanliness, driving over 230,000 solo miles, enough to circle the earth nine times. Whereas Glenn Gonzalez's commitment to the city is proven by community engagement, immaculate performance and reliability that improve the quality of life for its residents and businesses. And whereas Glenn Gonzalez's dedication to the city is unweavering as he consistently made himself available pre and post storms. And whereas after over 33 years of exemplary service, Glenn Gonzalez retired from the city of Millbrae on July 4, 2024. Now therefore, we, the members of the Millbrae City Council, do hereby congratulate and command Glenn Gonzalez and wishing him happiness in his future endeavor. And thank you for all your service. And I just want to also mention that he is also a Millbrae resident for over many, many decades. And he just recently moved to Sacramento for his retirement. It is members of our own community taking care of ourselves and being dedicated to the neighbors who you serve every day that makes this city great. So thank you so very much, Glenn, and we really appreciate you. Please join us at a podium.
Yeah, once again, thank you, City Council members and City of Millbrae. It's been a great town to work for, and I've made a lot of friends over the years, residents and employees or coworkers. And it's really been a joy for all these years to serve Millbrae. Yeah, like you were saying, the 230,000, I was doing some figuring the other day, and I was like, oh, wow, I could go around, I could have driven around the world nine times. It was kind of, I'm like, wow, that's really something. But I want to thank everyone that came today as well to celebrate with me. Just gonna, you know, hopefully do some traveling and get some rest and some work around the house or whatever, and, you know, try to stay busy. Else, let's see. Well, that's about it, I guess. It's, does anybody want to add anything?
Don't ask for anything that you don't want.
Oh, no. I mean, Glenn has been, when I think of Glenn as an employee, I just think solid. Just solid comes to mind because his commitment and dedication and just a joy, you know, as an employee in the many years that he's been in Millbrae. So thank you for just a great job, an outstanding job.
You're welcome.
You know, enjoy your retirement. And Glenn, you are an example that can be shared with all of our employees as your outstanding work and commitment. So congratulations on a great career.
It's all about, yeah, setting examples.
So thank you. Outstanding.
Thanks very much.
All right. Unless anyone wants to say anything? All right, so please join us at a photo. Thank you, Glenn. All right, next up, we've got a presentation tonight from Caltrain Executive Director. We have Michelle Bouchard joining us this evening.
Mayor Feng, Vice Mayor Goodman, council members, thanks so much for the opportunity to come present a pretty exciting story, we think. We're about 30 years into the electrification program, and we're proud to say that we're at some critical junctures in terms of completing all of our construction and safety testing in the last couple of months. You'll see some new trains running up and down here. We're burning them in. They need about 1,000 miles, but we're going to have a total of 24 of those sets eventually. And so we're really looking forward to some exciting times where we'll put some of those trains into service in August of this year, so mid-August. We're looking for a soft launch with a full launch of the service on September 21. And so some key dates. Would love to partner with Millbrae, such a key community and key supporter for so many years. Councilmember Pappen, thank you so much for your service on the MTC as well as on the Caltrain Local Policymakers Group. You're not going to have to listen to me anymore because I brought someone who knows much more about the project with me. Jason Baker is our head of government affairs, and he'll do most of the heavy lifting tonight.
Good evening, council members. Thank you so much for your work and for having us here. I'll work with the slide presentation. So next slide, please. You all know this is 77 miles of track from end to end at Caltrain, 31 stations, goes both ways. People, we get ridership both ways, which isn't always a common way to have a lot of ridership both ways. Pre-pandemic, we were the seventh largest commuter rail in the country. We had a little over 70% fare box recovery and carried over 18 million passenger trips in 2019. It was, if you were on trains around then, and I was, it was standing room only and then some on Caltrain. Next slide, please. But as you know, the COVID-19 pandemic hit Caltrain hard. New remote work patterns affected the Bay Area more than any other metro area. Our ridership went from about 70,000 average daily riders to 21,000. And unlike most transit agencies, most of our operating budget before the pandemic came from fares. That's not really normally how it works. As you make money, you run a railroad by selling tickets. But that's how Caltrain worked before the pandemic. We had a 74% fare box recovery in 2020. Now it's down to 30%. We are working on it. We're doing what we can. We'll need help. But in addition to our rolling out new amazing trains that you see along the corridor and the better schedules they allow, we're also working on whatever else we can to bring back ridership and diversify our base. We're currently running the most service ever, 104 trains a day. That means more off-peak and evening trains that help non-traditional commuters. And we're really proud of our $1 youth fare. Anyone with a youth clipper card can ride anywhere on Caltrain for a dollar. That's trying to get the next generation of riders used to riding Caltrain, seeing how far, seeing the opportunities that public transit and Caltrain specifically can offer. Next slide, please. I think I missed one, sorry. Next slide. Got so excited about our trains. We, as we think about the future, we're also thinking about partnerships with cities. Cities have a lot of influence in how people get around, and they shape experiences of where, how they live, work, and play. The ability of Caltrain to sustain and expand service will depend in large part on cities working with us to expand ridership groups beyond Caltrain's traditional core riders. Next slide, please. We've created a toolkit that provides a menu of options for cities to consider that includes city worker passes, or city go passes, offering discounted Caltrain for city workers. And we're always looking to work with you on station access, TOD, and more. You and your staff know best, but this is an effort to share what we've seen work in other cities and best practices. There's a list there that I won't read for you, but it's options of things we can work with. Next slide, please. I know you already kindly did that, but I got to go one more because we're getting to some of the other good stuff. It's no exaggeration to say we're at a pivotal moment in the history of Caltrain and maybe the region. I'll give you a moment to take a look at the pictures that kind of tell the story of how far we've come from that steam train in 1864 to diesels in the 50s and now to new electric green Caltrains in 2024. That, as Michelle said, they're running now. We've run them from San Jose to San Francisco. The tests are working, and we're getting very excited. It took a lot of work to get there. Uh, it, it took a lot of work to get there. Uh, next slide, please. Be approved, it says so on the slide. It took a lot of work to get there. 3,000 foundations, 2,500 poles, 2.5 million feet of wire, all you see on this slide and a lot more. But all the major construction is complete. We're running trains, we're testing them, we're getting their miles in, and we've got a soft launch coming up in August, middle of August or so. And our official debut with new service and the new electric trains is scheduled for September 21st, 2024. And that is not that long from now. Next slide, please. Oh, no, you already made the next slide. Uh, in addition to the construction of the new system, we've been making, busy making sure the community is ready for the system, uh, not just construction, but talking to folks about what a whole new electric train system on the corridor means, because it will be different. We've held community meetings, mailed out information, visited schools in person, talking to students about the system. Our motto at Caltrain is safety first and always, and that's how we've approached our, uh, our opportunity to talk to the public about this new system. There's a safety video at caltrain.com/safety. Next slide, please. We've also been showing off the new trains. When you get a, a new thing, you like to show it off. We've had a number of these events and thousands of people have turned out at, at many of them, people, it turns out, really like trains. And so they've come, they've gotten to walk on the trains, see all the, all the benefits of the new trains, sometimes get some squishies of, of new Caltrain trains. It's been really a neat, uh, in that time to show not just elected officials, but to the general public, um, what some of the, their dollars, federal, state and local dollars have brought to this region in the form of a brand new, green, better Caltrain system. Next slide. Uh, so electrified service, it means that you'll get, be able to get there faster, get from San Jose to San Francisco in under an hour on our bullet routes and have faster local service, like 75 minutes instead of 100 for the same route. It means 20% more train service and even more at equity priority stations and half hourly service on weekends and off-peak. That's a big difference. And the trains are nice. They're smoother and quieter, they're, there are outlets at every seat and free Wi-Fi and digital trip information right there. You're sitting in your seat, you can see a little digital board there to understand where you got to get off and, and what information you might need to know to make that trip a little easier, a little less stressful, um, to know that you're going to get on your way and be where you need to be. And of course, the trains are clean and green, which makes a big difference. We have, uh, next slide, please. We have detailed city fact sheets so you can see some of the benefits for your city. You can get these online, we can get them printed for you. These times, you can see these times here, uh, it does get folks there faster, but the times on the slide do compare the fastest electric trip to the fastest, fastest diesel trip. And I'll tell you, uh, because electric trains start and stop faster, you'll see even better time-saving on the local runs, because even with a bunch of stops, we can start them and stop them faster and get people where they need to go, um, a little faster. Next slide, please. As I mentioned, it will be a first-class experience for everyone, free Wi-Fi outlets at every seat, digital displays and well-designed environment, a smoother ride, pleasant lighting and big spacious bathrooms. If you've gotten to tour the, um, with the new trains, you'll see that it's really a big change. And of course, they're faster, more frequent and more reliable. Next slide, please. So you can learn more at caltrain.com/electrification. You can sign up for project updates at caltrain.com/getinvolved. And, um, we'd be happy for you to share Caltrain electrification benefits and news when you can with your, uh, your part of the way we talk to the public and let them know what's coming. Um, as, as I mentioned before, there's a soft launch in mid-August and we've got, um, project completion September 21st. We'd welcome you to partner with us to try to, um, make that the best celebration we can. It really is a monument to what we can do together when we partner cities and federal and state, um, to make our region a little bit better. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Schneider, you got a question?
Have a couple. First, congratulations. I know it is a big deal. I was at the groundbreaking in 2014 representing the Sierra Club for that. So it is nice to see it in fruition. Couple of questions. Millbrae, you guys own the train, the historical train station that Millbrae Historical Society runs a train museum. So that little model that you guys handed out, I gave to the train. But if you've got other things that commemorate this, it would be nice to make sure that our train station has that as part of their display for that. So that's kind of on the good news stuff.
Good suggestion, we'll, we'll get on that.
Well, now, and, and just so that you know, um, high-speed rail's plan is to move that train station well away from the railroad tracks. And the historical society had wanted to put in, I always get my gauges wrong, but the gauge where you put those little trains on them and adults can sit in them and they toot around. Yep. So that we could have an event center there. So I hope in the future we can collaborate more with our train museum, one of the three museums here in Millbrae. And then in addition to that, um, you know, it is the last freedom train that is left in America and Millbrae would love to be a stop on the freedom train process on that. And I don't know if that comes from Caltrain or from somebody else. It was on my to-do list for the last four years. So if we could work on that, that would help. Bring people to our down, to our gateway project. It's now called Harriet Tubman Way. Uh, we have a cherry tree planted in honor of Martin Luther King. So it just would be lovely to have that.
Okay.
Now my grumpy side, which Michelle knows.
Yeah, I'm gonna let Michelle off the grumpy side.
Michelle knows I have a grumpy side. So on the grumpy side, um, tonight, we're going to be talking about a tree ordinance. And as you did the electrification work, you had to cut some trees down or trim some trees. And I am hoping along the railroad tracks, um, we could do some programs together to do some noise abatement. I know it's going to be much noisier or quieter, but, um, it's still kind of ugly. And there's that big sound wall, which I think I can blame on Bart. I don't think it's Caltrain, let's blame it on Bart. Um, it gets tagged a lot and it looks pretty ugly. So if we can open up that doorway of talking about how collaboratively we can replace some trees, make it look a little bit better, especially along Hemlock. Um, if you live in those houses on Hemlock, it is, if you're talking to anybody on the phone, you have to stop talking right there. And, you know, and I know electrification will help, but if we could work on that together, that would be really, really fantastic. And then the last point that you may not know, um, the federal government has updated their environmental justice things and all of Millbrae is now considered over the 90th percentile for particulate pollution, probably, and I'm going to blame the airport and 101. But we're at 92, at 93% in that neighborhood by the train station. So again, trees can help with particulates. So let's open that doorway, I'll try to be less grumpy. And, um, I'm happy to help with the celebrations on there, but I'd love to bring us in and make that train museum really phenomenal. It is phenomenal. We have a representative from the historical society here. Let's just make it really, really phenomenal. Thank you.
Michelle, would you please get closer to the mic? Thank you.
Particularly, I do want to say the Freedom Train, we already have it on our list.
Excellent, yay. Thank you.
All right. Any other question? Okay. Go ahead, Councilmember Pappin.
Of course. Nice, nice to see you all. Thank you very much for coming and sharing the news with us. We greatly appreciate it. A couple of things here. Really enjoyed your statement about partnering with cities. Uh, we would love to see more of that, um, in various ways. And I know your staff is working diligently on special events and we would like to join you in some of those. We want to get more people back on the train so your ridership gets up again. And, um, you, you described like real-time information on the new chain, on the new trains, what, what's that called exactly?
I've seen the big old screens.
Yeah, so we've got GPS location.
You got to get to the microphone, sorry.
I'm, I'm.
No, no, no. Uh, that's due in large part to the fact that we've installed a broadband Wi-Fi network throughout the system. Not necessarily as part of the project, but concurrent.
Okay, that's great. Um, I have mentioned, we all want to improve the rider experience. You've got some lovely, um, covered seating way down on the platform. Way down. If that could be moved where more people could enjoy it, um, that would be helpful. I know there was a discussion about that, but nobody gets down that far. So it's totally useless where it is now. Who owns the lovely sculpture, the bear? Yeah.
Can I add, it's part of the Rails to Trails program. It was installed as part of the National Graphic Arts.
You stumped us both. But we can find out, there's a lot of smart staff that work for me who know all these answers.
Drive there right now. It's gorgeous. Um, we'd like to actually premiere that more so or somehow highlight that, um, in such a way. It's really a lovely sculpture. And so again, working with cities here and that would be great. It's kind of, I believe it's south of the old train station and kind of covered up. Okay, but it is, it is beautiful. So we should talk about, because it would enhance your station area too, um, if that could be more prominently displayed somehow. It, it is a wonderful statue. And, um, we are meeting with Bart about retail in the station area. So we would appreciate your support in any way, shape or form. We don't know what it'll look like yet, but the idea is that our community development people help bring vibrancy to the station, um, and making it more, uh, of a wonderful experience for your riders and their riders and Sam Trans and everybody else. So we look forward to working with you on that type of thing. You have been more receptive than our friends at Bart and we appreciate that. Uh, but you know, the ideas are, the holiday train, great. Uh, it would be wonderful if we could bring some bleachers out or something in the future because you get a lot of people enjoying that experience. So again, your staff is really actively trying to get riders back on. We want to help that process, so whatever we can do too. We have a wonderful public information officer. She went home yet, but, um, she's working on like a basketball team at home, but she's really great. So it, it is wonderful to see you here. It's very, very exciting to see it all. And now before you get into something else, um, budgets right now, because ridership are so low, you anticipate what kind of increased ridership with the new trains? And then you're still looking at a deficit. And I only bring this up because there was talk of a funding mechanism which might affect all of us. So you might as well take your shot here.
So, um, so I have a good news, bad news part to this as well. We've been, um, seeing month over month ridership growth of 30%. So we're really growing a lot, but we're growing a lot on a small base. We're anticipating a 20% bump with the introduction of electrified service. Our hope is to far outstrip that. Um, and then we have a 10-year financial plan that anticipates 10% year-over-year growth. We don't have a crystal ball, that's just sort of the best we can anticipate right now. We need to get the first year of electrified service under our belt. Um, and maybe I can ask Jason to talk a little bit about what we're seeing in terms of our near-term fiscal.
Yeah, so, um, as we said, you know, 70% power box recovery down to 30% Hertz slot. And then also our, our expenses are going up. Electricity is expensive like it is for all, all of you folks. So we're looking right now at a, you know, 33, $33 million operating deficit in 2026, about a $58 million deficit in 2027 and then 57 million in 2028. So it goes up and after a while, you know, and it goes up for a little bit after that. And that's really a factor of losing, um, the fare box recovery, losing some contributions from our member agencies and our, and our expenses going up, um, for, for things that we, that are really largely out of our control, like electricity costs and those things.
Did those figures include the 20% bump?
They do.
They do? Oh, okay. Um, so additionally too, we have two huge new businesses coming into Millbrae. We hope you will reach out to them for your partnerships as you do with businesses. I also would encourage you to continue the equity program for youth to, because you can grab them in as dedicated riders at an early age, which would be helpful there. And we are deeply concerned, we look forward to meeting you with your grade separations. And I would ask our city council to support funding for the Burlingame Broadway grade separation, what we call a NASCAR letter. So if we can get all the city logos on a letter of support for that, there's been like talk of, we will fund this, but there's no money for it right now. And we want to make sure the state does find money for that to start working on grade separations throughout the corridor here. So ask my colleagues and the city staff if we can somehow join in our other cities. It's time to come together to, um, make these a reality. Once again, I thank you for being here. We look forward to working with you.
Thank you, and thank you for your support on those great, that great sub issue. It's a, it's really an all hands, hands-on-deck, uh, NASCAR letter kind of effort to try to make sure that we do the best we can.
And, and we say Broadway and Burlingame, it is the most dangerous grade separation in the whole state. And I'm sure we've all had a close call going there. So that, that is why it is a priority right now and they're very close to funding it and really starting, I think next year is what they've been saying. So that is why I bring that one up. And they're all important, we just want to show we can get one done. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Pappin, Councilmember McHalen.
Thank you. Hello, welcome and good to meet you. Thank you for all the updates. It's been wonderful to see the electric trains. It's my fence and then Caltrain. So I have a, a front view and ear of all that's happening with Caltrain all the time. I'm totally used to it, sleep through it. Been there 22 years. I'm very excited about the electric chains and the Freedom Train and echo a lot of what Councilmember Pappin was saying with our new businesses coming in and, um, all the partnerships and helping promote. I look forward to, um, working on that. Just along with the grade separation, having an opportunity here, we're in the beginning stages of starting an eastside specific plan. And we have a neighborhood here in Millbrae Marina Vista that only has one way in and out, and it is across the train tracks. And it's pretty frequent that we've had scenarios where the guardrails get stuck down or even a train is stopped in the middle of the crossing for up to a half hour and, you know, cars are backed up, people can't get in and out. And so far, when that's happened, it's just been an inconvenience, maybe you're late to work. But, you know, God forbid, there's a situation with an ambulance or a fire truck or, you know, other disaster situations where in this planning, we're really looking at what are the short-term, immediate things we can do and what are longer-term things, whether it's, you know, grade separation or things like that. So just to put that specific item on your radar as we start these processes and planning.
Yeah, I'll make sure that, I mean, he, team pays attention to that process, that's important and I'm glad you brought it to our attention.
All right. Councilmember Schneider, you have any follow-ups?
I would, I would only add, yes, sometimes the gate is down a long time and in the eastside specific plan, um, I'm going to throw this out there because I'm a short timer now. Um, high-speed rail did not even include that grade separation in their environmental impact report. So very concerned that Center Street and Marina Vista are left behind. And when you add your 104 trains over, um, I, I don't know how many that is an hour, but then you throw in the high-speed rail trains someday, um, that's a lot of trains on there. I had one last question, um, and I know it's probably not up to you, but the big issue that we get because we are Millbrae is are the trains synced with Bart? And how are we doing on that and are we making it a priority?
We are trying, we are talking with Bart, I'm looking to the boss. I mean, I, I think that one of the things we're hoping is that just more frequency will help that, um, because that's one of the easiest ways you can make things more seamless is having more things come so that you don't have to rely on them exactly meeting up. They come frequently enough. So that's, that's kind of long-term hope is that, that will help work on that. But I, I know that's an issue of concern. So I've been at Caltrain for two and a half months, I think, a little more than that. Uh, and I definitely have heard that's an issue. I'm aware of it and I know that we, it's something that we want to do the best we can within, you know, our constraints.
Just so that you know what happens, because Millbrae gets blamed when the trains don't match up together. You know, they don't look at it at Bart, they don't look at it at Caltrain, they don't look at it as a Genentech bus, you know, but, um, because we're Millbrae, we're supposed to have control when we have no control. So if there's anything we can do to partner with you and help that, including supporting the seamless transportation activities, feel free, please ask. That's another place where we can collaborate. Thank you.
Councilman McHalen.
I have one more question.
I'll try to have one more answer.
The, uh, you mentioned that the electric trains stop a lot faster and I know unfortunately we have loss of life every year, um, on the train tracks. Do we anticipate the electric trains and their better stopping to reduce any of that? Is it very hard to tell?
I mean, I thought about the boss, uh, who focuses a lot on safety.
I mean, the, the, I, I will say they have safety systems that are far beyond what we have now, which isn't to say that what we have now is safe, but, um, it will be very hard for us to anticipate. But it will be very hard for us to anticipate. But I mean, I think you'll see how they stop, and you can understand if it's the same type of reaction time that an engineer has. You know, I think we've got a better chance. Let me put it that way.
Go ahead.
As far as the coordination of schedules, there's a commitment towards that, is there not?
It's a priority.
Thank you. Because MTC is looking for that, among other things. We appreciate that. If there's any issues, we hope that we can assist you in that reality. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Without any further question, thank you, Michelle, and thank you, everybody on Caltrain. Continue to.
Yes, thank you. Give your service.
One last thing. Nobody has to answer it, but economic development is high priority. We've got great weather, great restaurants, walkability. And for what it's worth, we would love to have you, because I know you're looking for space, in the city of Millbrae at some point in the future. So if there's anything I can do to help out, feel free to contact me if we can be of assistance.
All right.
Beautiful place, beautiful city.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here today. All right, next up is a general review and a staff briefing, and also reporting out on July 2nd and July 9th, closed session. City manager.
Yes, thank you. There is no reportable action of the city council on either the closed session of July 2nd or July 9th. And then real quick, in terms of what's happening in the city of Millbrae, quick overview first and foremost, just a shout out to all of you on the city council, our great staff here at the city of Millbrae, Hannah and her team in recreation, of course, our Public Works Department under the leadership of Craig Sintas that was out and about on July 4th, and Jeff and Joe Gonzalez, who was here this evening. I really appreciate all the hard work for an outstanding 4th of July celebration. A lot of feedback from the community, they really enjoyed it, so more to come. Also, if, and Mayor, this is something I know you've been working on at PCE. We just found out that we had received $220,000 in one grant from PCE to install EV charging stations at our Public Works Corporation yard, and also another $60,000 to convert some streetlights to LED. And we still have three grants that are outstanding. One is for battery purchase for storage at our recreation center. So good news there from PC and our ongoing partnership. Events that are coming up, this Friday, Millbrae goes to the movies at Central Park, starting at sundown, right around between 8:00 and 8:30. So great family event for everyone. The movie will be Wish. So everybody come out and enjoy the beautiful weather that we've been having at Central Park this Friday evening for an outdoor movie. Next slide. We have, also, I need to have a shout out to one of our recreation employees on the great work that she's been doing with our senior programs. And so that's Joanna Hafter. Since she's been taking over the senior program, she's just done an outstanding job. And some of the events that I mentioned in the city council and the community, we have our Adult Senior Walk Thursday, July 18th, 11:00 AM meeting at Central Park. This has been a huge success, plus some of the other programs that she's been working on. So Adult Senior Walk Thursday, July 18th at 11:00 AM. And then additional upcoming events, again, senior stories, Tuesday, August 6th at 10:00 AM, Millbrae Recreation Center. I was honored to be one of their invited guests and share my story with all the seniors at the Recreation Center. So it's a really nice time to get to know people out in the community and various neighbors. So 10:00 AM, August 6th, at the Recreation Center Senior Lounges, Senior Stories. So if you have some time, go have some coffee and listen to their guests and probably get on there, all of you, get on their schedule to share your senior, your stories with the seniors. I can now say senior story, but some of you can't, so. And then Senior Birthday Lunch, Tuesday, August 13th. I know a lot of council members do attend those, 11:30 AM at the Millbrae Recreation Center. You can RSVP on our website or contact the number up there on the screen at 259-233-8. It's a $5 free or free if it's your birthday month. So another great program that we have. And then we are bringing back our Beats Brews &amp; Vines downtown on Broadway, just at the intersection of Hillcrest and Broadway, Thursday, August 15th at 6:00 PM. So we've got a couple of great bands. So hope to see everybody out as this concert series just gets bigger and bigger for the And this bingo night, this is our second bingo night, I believe. Our first one was extraordinarily popular. And so we're bringing it back again Friday, August 23rd, 6:30 PM. And so all the information is available on our website as well. So cash prizes, dessert, this will be at the Millbrae Recreation Center again, 6:30 PM. So bingo's been tremendously popular and fun, so it's great to have that program. And I believe, Mr. Eduardo, I think that's it. One other thing, and this is really a very important public service announcement, I think, for everybody that's listening out there, because I know that the council has received inquiries from the public about the requirements and regulations concerning the California Voters Rights Act, district boundaries, district formation. So tomorrow, we'll be releasing an informational memo to the community. Our city attorney has written up the memo. So it comes from the city attorney through the city council. So it's a memo from the city council to the community on information about district formation, California Voters Rights Act, what the law allows councils to do and not allow us to do. And just a quick primer is it doesn't allow you to do much. And it's actually not legal to change district boundaries mid-decade. But there are some elements of the law that people can read and have further explanation. So that'll be on our website. They can also contact my office or the city clerk's office for more information as they read the information. So tomorrow, we'll post that on our website.
Excellent. Thank you so much for the update, and always thankful that you're giving the community informed with all the facts and all the relevant legal aspects of all the things that the community cares about. And they are, we know that they really wanted to get to the facts and get to the information, and they're passionate about this community, and so these fact sheets will certainly help. Councilmember Anne Schneider.
Thank you, Mayor. City manager, a question going back to your first item, the grant for replacing streetlights with LEDs. The Sierra Club put on a really good dark skies webinar, and I think it's more on sodium lighting, but there are certain frequencies that light come out. Because of the frequency, it reduces the quantity of insects, which then impacts bats, and they are huge in terms of pollinating native plants. So could we make sure that the frequency is not something that will damage the insect population and how it trickles down on that? And I can get you that webinar link. It was actually a really good webinar on dark skies. A city in Marin County is the first city, I think, that is applying dark sky principles to all of their lighting purposes. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else? Councilmember Papin.
I really want to compliment the recreation staff on the tent they bought, the picnic tables with the umbrellas. I mean, it was just wonderful for the 4th of July, and now we have these in the future. What a great investment. And the new games they provided to all the kids. I mean, it was really a wonderful event, and thank you for putting that together and adding all those amenities to really, because it was hotter than heck. And also like to thank Bacchus for being there and serving the people, offering them libations there, also a couple food trucks. Mr. Softy made a fortune, I think, that day. So and the bands that showed up, it was really a great, great event. But because the staff put all that together, it really made it a lot more pleasant for everyone. So thank you on that. Mr. Mayor, do you want to announce that meeting later this week?
Which one?
With the businesses?
I think that more to come on that topic. All right. Thank you, Councilmember Papin. Anybody else? Ms. McHalen, do you have anything?
Just again, for the public, because I've had people write to me, huge shout out to CERT and to the city for preparing the cooling center. It was every time I went up there, because I needed it, it was, had a lot of people of all ages, little ones to older people. CERT, you did a great job. So very glad for that, the water there. And again, staff for thinking about that. It was super. And it turns out that sitting out on the porch, you could listen to the music too in the shade, it all worked out really good.
All right, excellent. Thank you so much for the city manager update. Next up is the approval minutes. We've got the regular meeting minutes of June 25th, 2024, and we also have the special meeting minute on July 2nd, 2024. Any council comments? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion.
Moved. So moved.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilmember McHalen.
Second.
We have a second from Councilmember Anne Schneider. Would you please do a roll call?
Councilmember Schneider.
Aye.
Councilmember Papin.
Yes.
Councilmember McHalen.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Goodman.
Aye.
Mayor Fung.
Aye.
The two set of minutes are approved by the vote of 5-0.
Thank you so much. And we don't have any oral report from any city committee and commission chair this evening. And that next one is public communication, and this portion of the agenda is reserved for those who wish to comment on any item not appearing on tonight's agenda. However, speakers must address subject matters within the jurisdictions of the city council. Every speaker will have three minutes, and the speaker is to address directly to the entire council, not individual council member nor the public. Questions, if any, shall be directed to the mayor, who will determine whether or in what manner an answer will be provided. And there shall be no debate with the speakers by any council member and/or the staff. We will begin with in-person speakers and then followed by speakers online. I have two slips right here, and the first is Dan Stedjink, followed by Marge Colapietro. Thank you for joining us, Dan.
Good to see you guys here. It's been a while. I think the last time I was here was 10 years ago, and Leland Yee was speaking here. It was kind of a, I feel like the spirit of Leland Yee kind of lives on here, you know? Not the federal gun-running charges, but the community-building part of it. I'll just point out that in 1881, there was an electric train going from San Francisco all the way down to Millbrae and San Mateo also. Everything is circular. You guys got a big election coming up, two weeks. Left or right, it's going to decide the future of Millbrae, what's going on here. My name's Dan Stedjink. I'm from Pacifica, kind of consider it the Millbrae of the coast on there. You know, I looked and I wondered, you know, it's interesting how the election is pushing so early in the vacation period, you know? Wouldn't you want everybody possible to vote on that election? I really think in this particular election, it's important that everybody get out there and vote on this and let the people be heard, you know? I don't think there's anybody in Millbrae who doesn't know how they feel about the La Quinta Hotel, Project Home Key, and Article 34 of the California Constitution. You know, all the council members have certainly taken a position on it, and maybe it will decide their fate or lack thereof. Which is why I was surprised two weeks ago, when I was in San Francisco at the MTC BAFA meeting, and I saw that San Mateo County's representative, Jeanne Popman, voted for a ballot measure that invalidated and voided Article 34 in the nine counties of the BAFA. You can see it on the sheet here, and I've got one for any audience members who have it here. This is part of the regional measure for the nine-county bond, $20 billion bond that's anticipated to cost the median San Mateo County homeowner between $42,000 and $72,000 each. San Mateo County, Santa Clara County, San Francisco, Alameda-Contra Costa, Sonoma, Solano, and Napa Counties, all, five million voters are voting on this, sharing $20 billion. The total cost is $48.5 billion, four times the cost of the FBI. The bond lasts 53 years. And again, it invalidates Article 34 of the California Constitution, which is what everybody is voting on in two weeks. Essentially, the entire vote on your two council members recall will be moot because of the vote that Ms. Popman made two weeks ago. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dan, for your comment. Ms. Colapietro.
Don't take this off my time. I would just let you know, comment of interest that goes with the train presentation. I was recently contacted by someone from Caltrain wanting to know lots about the Art and Wine Festival that's coming up and listening to their calendar of when everything's going to be ready. I'm happy to work with this person and see what they could do relative to the Art and Wine Festival, because that, of course, is on Labor Day weekend, and they're all excited about getting in, doing something. So just, and note, the reason I march, and Loriann couldn't be here this evening for something that came up, and she wanted me to tell you that there's very good news that's happening at the Chamber of Commerce. The first thing is that the chamber recently hired a 24/7 answering service that allows calls to the chamber to be relayed to them, and then they take all the information and they relay it over to the chamber office. And then that's where the messages will be going. The telephone number is on the website and is 650-383-4443. And you will find that on the website. And this has been, for any of you who have maybe called the chamber, you'll have that, you'll see how it works. And then the second thing is that the Chamber of Commerce, the item, the Chamber of Commerce and the city of Millbrae have formed a partnership to work together to grow and benefit our businesses, assist with grand openings and celebrations and ribbon cuttings and events. And they're also going to be having a meeting. I'm not sure of the day and the time, because I haven't.
City manager.
By rule, three minutes is three minutes. We have to be fair to everyone.
Yeah.
What?
Marge, sorry, the three minutes for the public comment, it's for everyone. But for further information that you have to be released to the public, perhaps you can work with the city manager's office, and then we can make sure that the information is being made available to the public. Thank you, Marge.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
And this is just a clarification for the record here. The BAFA bond does not do away with Article 34, so need to be clear on that point. And again, 80% of the funding will be given to the counties, and the cities will request the funding at that level. So just clarifying, matter of fact.
All right.
Which you're allowed to do.
All right. Further public comment, city clerk, I think we have two online speakers.
The first speaker is Grace X. If you could please accept the mute.
When the dust settles from the recall election, I think it behoves the remaining city council to look into ways to strengthen ethics standards. As an example, a group of private citizens in San Mateo took it upon themselves to create As an example, a group of private citizens in San Mateo took it upon themselves to create Ethic San Mateo that advocates for rules and laws establishing governmental ethic standards and enforcement while promoting and reporting on ethic, ethical conduct of government officials. I believe an ethics commission is sorely needed because it will act as a deterrent to abusive politicians and educate the public on how their politicians conduct themselves. For example, there was a letter to the editor in the, uh, San Mateo Daily Journal stating that Goodman has served residence with dignity and honesty. I don't know if this person is delusional, ill-informed, or gaslighting. But I think we have all seen, and many of us, including the city officials, have been the target of his bullying, including me. As an, and an ethics commission would also help with researching candidates so citizens are not caught off guard again with politicians that have a court file that includes spousal abuse, failure to pay, child support, bad debt, et cetera, while claiming to have been a community leader for 30 years to deflect from his own behavior. I was particularly concerned with Goodman's statement at the last city council meeting that he wanted to leave the room during public comments because he anticipated a public attack. Thus, he left the room when I made a public comment. But it appears that his leaving the room was for theatrics because when he came back, he stated, "We have heard baseless personal attacks, lies, and slanderous Jim Crow tactics and racist tropes by an individual that is given encouragement by other elected officials to do so to gain public favor." How did he know that was, uh, what I said because he left the room? Goodman is a fraud, and I find it disgusting to throw around such horrendous racial accusations to deflect from his own bad behavior. He must be held accountable. Vote yes on the recall. Finally, I made a public records request for the video of the Zoom meetings Goodman had last summer. Yesterday, when I received a late response from the city, Goodman's form response stated that he may have something responsive to my request, but needed more time. It is a simple request, so I have to ask, what is he afraid of? Release the tapes. Thank you.
We're not comment.
In my experience, we shouldn't be responding at all.
On the record, I have nothing to say or respond to lies.
Okay.
You want to correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would like to.
It, it, it is the protocol.
Is there a yes or no?
Yeah.
If you would like to, that's fine. If not, I would say, um.
Nobody should be responding.
Right. And so.
Nobody should be responding to the public speakers.
Okay, I'm waiting for council. Council said something different.
Well.
It is on our protocol. To not respond to the public.
Right, but you did nothing in the exact same thing. So is that my ri, my rights being trampled on while allowing one other in the same instance if it's a matter of fact? I'd say it a matter of fact. Doesn't matter. It's a matter of fact response. So I'm responding to council to make sure either to set the record straight that we have a double standard or we don't.
Well, we don't want double standards. We should.
No, we.
Wait, no, no. Let council speak.
Certainly, there is no double standard.
Okay.
Right? You know, it is my duty to remind everyone on this council of our protocol. But it's not exactly something that I like to do to take away your mic.
Right.
Right? And I think all of us as an elected official, we have a duty to uphold our own standard.
Right.
High standard.
Yes. And you remain quiet.
As stated in the protocol.
Right.
Which I have reminded all of us over and over and over again. So here's what I'm going to say, that I'm going to ask my, all my colleagues and all my staff as well to uphold that same protocol that we all agree to.
Right. But you're reminded of it when it's me, but in the other instance, you remained extremely quiet.
That, that.
And the records will show. That's all I wanted to make sure that if you're saying that, it's on the record. We asked council, it looks like council is saying we shouldn't have a, uh, an image of double standard. And so I asked that council finish the statement that she was going to make or a suggestion to you.
So, you know, I'm going to remind all of us one more time that we are not going to respond.
Okay.
To the public comment.
So we're going to ignore council.
No.
That's what I meant, saying let the council speak, please.
I think we have a protocol. Um, generally speaking, we are not supposed to be correcting the record. We, we receive public comment and move on. There could be other ways that we can correct the record, but public comment is not supposed to be a time to have back and forth.
Right.
Because it does raise issues like this. Um, when, when is it appropriate? When is it not?
Right.
So, Mr. Mayor, if you want to follow the protocol, don't call on people after public comment, right?
I'm not calling on people after public comment as much the fact that, listen, you know, we all need to respect the fact that there's a protocol. And much the same way, I like to respect all of my colleagues on this council, sitting on this bench. And all of us are adult and we know how to be the leader, be the leader that we're elected to be.
And I'm not, I'm not saying that you're wrong or.
I'm just trying to trust everyone of us.
Should have or should not have been made. But what I'm saying is, once it was allowed with zero interruption for you, then to only respond to me, it seems that there's a double standard. And if there's an image of a double standard, there needs to be a way that either we remediate or just state it for the record that there is in fact a double standard. And you're saying for your purpose, for the purpose of moving forward, you'd like, you'd rather just choose to ignore the fact that there is a double standard or there was one.
That's not what I said.
But there, that's what you're saying. You're saying let's move on. And so I, I would love to move on and I'll make my statement at the end of the meeting.
It's fine. I mean, what I'm trying to say here is that I stated what the protocol says and it's clear.
Yep, and it was ignored.
And, and, and I would like to treat all of us, um, as the leader that we're elected to be.
Exactly.
And I.
And as a mayor, you ignored your own protocol or holding a council member accountable to that protocol by choosing to call on that council member.
And I apologize for my statement.
Yeah, but it doesn't unring the bell. So let's move on.
All right. So, um, do we have any more, any more, uh, public comments?
The other person who raised his hand before 7:15 lowered his hand.
Okay, thank you. So that would be the end of public communication this evening. Moving on to consent calendar. Item number five, approved by motion, the quarterly investment schedule for the third quarter fiscal year 2023 to 2024. And item number six, approved by motion, a request from the Chinese hospital for the use of recreation center Greg Hall and a fee waiver for the Chinese hospital community health fair on August 17, 2024. And item number seven, approved by motion, a request from the Asian Pacific Islander American Public Affairs for the use of the recreation center Greg Hall and lobby and fee waiver for the California Green Tax Symposium on September 7, 2024. If I'm not mistaken, city clerk, that this item has already been pulled from tonight's agenda.
That's correct. The applicant withdrew the request.
Thank you. Item number eight, adoption of a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a grant agreement to support Millbrae Community Television and an agreement for broadcasting video and channel management services by MCTV in the amount not to exceed $129,000 for the two-year period. And item number nine, adoption of a resolution authorizing the city manager or destiny to execute contract change order number five for the sodium hypocaline system redesign project with Anderson Pacific Engineering Construction Inc. Does anyone want to pull any item from the consent calendar? No? Any council comment, discussions, questions to staff? Or else I entertain a motion.
So, Mr. Mayor, just, just for clarification, item number seven is withdrawn from the agenda, so the action of the council on concern will not.
Is five, six, eight, and nine.
Correct. Thank you.
Motion to approve consent items five, six, eight, and nine.
We have a motion from councilmember Schneider.
As stated by the mayor.
Okay. Do we have any seconds? Second from councilmember Cahalan. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Snyder?
Aye.
Councilmember Papin?
Yes.
Councilmember Cahalan?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Goodman?
Aye.
Mayor Funk?
Aye.
Consent items five, six, eight, and nine are passed by a vote of five to zero.
Thank you very much. We moving on to public hearing tonight. And item number 10, holding a public hearing and adopt the resolution authorizing the collection of sewer surface charges on the county tax roll for residential and commercial customers based on the fiscal year 2024 to 25 sewer surface charge report. City manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. City council, I'd like to introduce Mr. Mike Sung, our finance director for the staff presentation.
Thank you, city manager Williams. Um, good evening, Honorable Mayor, Honorable Vice Mayor, and Honorable City Council Members. Today, um, we have a pretty quick, um, presentation in regards to the sewer service charge collection for fiscal year 24, 25. Um, as part of a background, last year, um, in April, during the two, um, April meetings, the 11th and the 25th of 2023, the city introduced an ordinance to place the sewer charges onto the county property tax assessment and direct charges roll. County approved that ordinance and amended the municipal code and, um, staff collaborated with consultants to draft a report and, um, we placed each of these charges by APN and by account, um, onto the, um, uh, property tax assessment and direct charges rolls. Um, as required, um, every year, we need to, um, adopt a separate resolution with, um, new charges on there for every single fiscal year. So, um, annually, the city council would need to pass a, a resolution approving this and, um, staff report, um, and the sewer charges report is actually attached to the staff report. Key things that are going on right now are the, um, public hearing, which is required as well on today's date. Um, and then at the end of the public hearing, if, um, council so chooses, is the adoption of the resolution approving the sewer service charge report. Um, adopted, this gets submitted to the county. We're anticipating on or around next Monday, around, um, July 15th. We want to get everything into the county by around the end of the month. Uh, that's what the, um, county due date is. Um, all of the, um, assessments or direct charges go onto there and get programmed in around the beginning of August. So, um, this does coincide with the, um, tax roll schedule. Um, most people are used to this. They, uh, see, uh, this is two payments generally around December 10th and April 10th. Um, the sewer charges report has been, um, available online for quite a while. It's, um, available here. This is the actual link. If you go onto our website, you can, uh, click on to, um, utility and actually see the, the link there. And then, um, just some additional information, most of the cities in San Mateo County are, um, doing the same thing. They're on the county buildings, uh, schedule. A few exceptions are all talking about adding it on, actually. I've talked to various, um, colleagues and just about everybody's trying to get it on to the county role. Are the ones that are still missing, but overwhelming majority are already there. Um, our recommendation is to hold this public hearing and adopt the resolution authorizing the collection of the sewer service charges, um, onto the county's property tax assessment, direct charges, um, role for residential and commercial customers based on the fiscal year 24, 25, um, sewer service charge report. With that, um, open for any questions?
Thank you, Director Sung. Councilmember Ash Schneider.
Um, thank you, um, Mr. Sung. And again, great staff report. I'm loving tonight.
Sorry, hold on.
Open public hearing.
Uh, I, I did, well, I did announce it's a public hearing at the beginning of this item.
So your announcement, open the public hearing.
Correct. All right. And then we'll, we'll have a chance to hear the public in a moment. Councilmember Schneider, keep going.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, um, council. It, it's always an issue how to open the public hearing, every time. Um, thank you. Um, thank you for the staff report. I have two, a couple of questions from last year, from things that the public asked. There had been a great deal of concern from landlords who, and it may not be completely appropriate, but let me try it. Um, have the landlords been able to do the changes in their contracts, their leasing agreements with their tenants so that, um, the water users or the sewer users are paying it, not the landlord? Have we heard any complaints this time around?
So I've actually gotten, uh, multiple calls from multiple people. I want to reiterate that these are charges. They're not taxes. They're not assessments. And, um, uh, basically, this is not really part of rent. It's, it's, it's an actual charge and whatever the contract between the landlord and the renters are, they're usually, uh, in regards to rent. So since this is a direct charge and these charges are actually placed onto the property tax assessment and direct charges role, which encompasses everything, um, that's a different category in itself. So what I've gotten a lot of calls about more recently is just to try to get this, uh, report out a little bit earlier so that they can pre-plan for it. So we try to get this out as soon as we can, um, so that the landlords do have this information available. We've also gotten multiple, um, calls in regards to, hey, can we check the accuracy of this? And then we work with every single, um, um, landlord on there and then we review the records. We base it on, um, the charges that are here. And just a little bit more information, these are based off of the winter consumption charges, those four months between November and March. And, um, so when we're looking at these, um, data, we, we look at what that looks like and we also, um, look at what the, um, amounts are. So we've worked closely with most of the landlords. We've, uh, worked with, uh, the HOAs as well. One of them just changed recently. They wanted to do it by square footage instead of by, um, just a equal, um, exchange. So we work with them on that as well to, um, basically, uh, cut out what the actual amounts are based off of square footage for each of the individual units itself. So we've gotten a lot of calls. We've worked with everyone.
Excellent. Thank you. Other question, and I think I've brought this up in the past, um, especially when I was talking to people about the fire assessment. And people keep saying, well, the city charges blah, 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 blah. Um, I was wondering if on our webpage somewhere we can put every time some of these fees are expiring out. I believe the Clean Bay charge expires out in 2034. But, um, could we do that? Because when I'm working with the public, I love to point to the website and say, here's where you can find out when this charge is going to change or go away. Or, you know, it's a chance of us increasing our transparency and showing the public that this is not a charge forever. Assuming I'm correct, that the Clean Bay charge is not a charge forever.
Um, so noted. Uh, the actual charges that you see on our webpage show the, um, exact amounts and the Clean Bay charge isn't expected to go up for the next two and a half years.
What happens, just so that you know, I had people saying they were, well, we're still paying off the library and we're paying off the police department. But I could say, no, we've paid off the police department and we paid off the library. It's just really good for us in our position to be able to say, oh, look, look at how good the city is doing. We've done blah, blah, blah. And if we have it in one place, I can point people to that and maybe we all get fewer phone calls. So just a suggestion. Thank you. I'm, I'm happy to support.
I think that's, it's on our website, but people have to read so we can summarize and do like an executive summary on our website so people have it.
Just make it easy so we can help do your, help get the word out. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Otherwise, this is, uh, public hearing. Um, I'd like to open this to the public who wants to make a comment on this item. I don't have any speaker slip yet.
Um, it looked like I have Ni Noa, that with the hands raised.
City clerk, sorry, you have a slip in front of you right here? Is that for this item?
That's for another item.
For another, okay. Fair enough. Go ahead and, uh, call on the online speaker, please.
Ni Noa, please accept the mute. Ni Noa, I want to make sure you're. Are you accepting the mute for item number 10 for the public hearing item?
I guess we can come back to her.
Okay. Um, so it looked like she is logged on twice and with hands raised on both.
Technical difficulties there. Try unmuting it, but it's just not responding, is it?
Should I try once more?
Try one more time.
All right. Ni Noa, please accept the mute. Doing for both accounts. Ni Noa?
Hi.
Oh, there you go.
This is John Chang.
Okay, John, we can hear you. Go ahead. You got three minutes.
Uh, I just want to, uh, report one, uh, incident, um, July 1st, Sunday, uh, our, our neighbor, uh, is, uh, 1000 Brock, uh, Sequoia Avenue and, uh.
John? Mr. Chang, uh, we're here on item number 10, uh, regarding a public hearing on adopting a resolution authorizing the collection of sewer surface charges on the county tax roll. It seems you're discussing a different item.
Oh, okay. So I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's okay. So, yep. All right. Anyone else?
I don't believe so, Mayor.
Okay. All right. So closing public comment, bring it back to the council. Um, any further comment from my colleagues? Yes, I already closed the public hearing. Yes.
I'd like to, I'd like to move to pass item number ten. The resolution authorizing the collection of sewer service charges on the county tax role for residential and commercial customers based on the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five service charge report.
Thank you for the motion. Do you have a second?
Second.
We have a second from councilmember Enshneider. No further comments? City clerk, would you please do a roll call?
Councilmember Snyder.
Hi.
Councilmember Pappin.
Yes.
Councilmember Kenhalen.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Goodman.
Aye.
Mayor Fong.
Aye.
Public hearing item number ten passed by a vote five to zero.
Thank you very much. Moving on to existing business number eleven, discussion and directions regarding the draft tree protection and urban forestry ordinance. City manager, I think we have Director Mokenson here joining us this evening.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much.
We'll hand it over to Mr. Mokenson.
You bring a tree trunk with you.
I brought some wood.
All right.
Can't talk about trees without wood. Good evening, Mayor Fong, members of the city council. We're back tonight with the draft tree protection and urban forestry ordinance. I'll be giving you an overview of the evolution of that ordinance since our prior meeting. Next slide, please. So this item has been before the committee enhancement advisory committee at multiple meetings. The version of the ordinance that is before you this evening is the one that they have recommended to the city council. As per direction at your prior meeting on February thirteenth, we held a public workshop on March twenty-first that was quite successful in the rec center. About twenty residents come, we got a lot of valuable feedback. Lot of concerns of residents, definitely residents are concerned about the cost of tree trimming. They want to see streamlined permits. They are not interested in seeing additional fees and costs imposed on them for maintaining their properties. But by and large, you know, it was a successful ordinance, and we got a lot of good feedback and a lot of good ideas out of that. We have incorporated many of those into our recommendations this evening for implementation. So, sorry, this microphone cuts out a little bit here and there. And so we're here again with follow-up review and direction before you this evening. So, next slide. So what are the goals of the tree ordinance? Why are we updating this ordinance? This ordinance was last crafted back, I believe, in nineteen ninety-three. So we're revisiting something that I think has been long neglected here in the city. Why are we doing this? Well, we want to make sure that tree work is being done safely and properly. We want to make sure that the, we have an ordinance that preserves trees and maintains and promotes the urban canopy. We want to make sure that it promotes and maintains community character and aesthetics. Trees are a major part of our community aesthetics. They beautify our city, they clean our air, so many benefits to trees. And we want to make sure that street trees are placed and planted appropriately in our community, make sure that we have very attractive streetscapes, and continue to have attractive street scrapes here in town. Next slide, please. So I want to give you an overview about the framework that this tree ordinance exists in, and the state of California has some requirements about tree work. There are, there are some rules in place. The state requires that tree and palm contractors have a tree service specialty contractor's license. That's called a C forty-nine tree and palm contractor license. They have to pass a special test to obtain that license. They have to demonstrate that they know how to do their job. That type of contractor is responsible for planting, maintaining, and removing trees and palms. That includes pruning, stump grinding, and tree and palm and limb guying. That's when you tie the guy wires to hold them in place. They also are responsible for doing the heavy work that you see with cherry pickers and cutting down very large trees using cranes and large equipment. The state of California requires that all tree and palm contractors are bonded and insured. They have to have workers' compensation insurance. And the state also says that this kind of contractor does not include gardeners, and it specifies the kind of work that gardeners are limited to do. They're limited to performing incidental pruning of trees that are less than fifteen feet in height. So anything more than that, you have to have a licensed tree contractor in the state of California. Next slide, please. We also have existing established best practices out there that help guide how you do tree trimming, that guide how arborists work and tree valuation methodology, so we don't have to reinvent those wheels. And the gold standard, the standard that everyone has adopted in the United States is the American National Standards Institute's A three hundred tree care standards. So that's the guide on how you prune trees. That is what people use, whether you're a tree contractor or an arborist, to do your job. And it's a little bit like, you know, like a lot of these other best practice standards that we have out there. There's lots of engineering best practice standards, there's guidebooks on transportation management, things of that nature. So it's part of the industry, it's one of these best practices. There's this whole, there's criteria for who's, what certified, what requires or what constitutes a certified arborist, that's already well-established. What arborists do, identifying tree health and diagnosing tree health and disease. And there's also a standard methodology for tree valuation out there. There's actually a guidebook that's a standardized method of identifying the value of a tree, the monetary value of trees. Next slide, please. So what is this ordinance? What kind of permits are we looking at for our tree ordinance? And there's basically five different categories of tree permits that you're going to see in the city. The vast majority of tree permits are going to be for tree pruning. And tree pruning is when you, when you are removing more than twenty-five percent of a mass of a tree, whether it's the canopy or the roots, it's twenty-five percent of a tree's mass or more, that's defined as tree pruning. That's going to be the vast majority of permits overwhelmingly. On occasion, we're going to see people who need a permit for a tree removal, that's when they need to take out a tree in their yard. Tree relocation is even less common. Sometimes we have people who need to excavate an old mature tree, literally put it on wheels and move it to a different location. That's a pretty big thing. I don't know if you've ever seen photos of that. I don't have one in my slide program, but it's, it's, you know, that's a big deal, the different kind of permit, but definitely something that needs to get permitted, especially if it's going through the public right of way, if you're taking this, you know, tree across the street or down the block.
Mr. Mayor.
You did it.
We did it. We got the palm trees from the hotel and put them in the, on Millbrae Avenue. The city has actually done that.
Yeah, palm trees are a little easier to relocate, being.
We would have liked to do it at the BART station.
Yeah, so they're definitely quite a, quite a sight to see when you have like a big old tree with the, you know, with the roots. On occasion, we may see somebody needs to do some excavation within a tree's root area when they don't have a building permit. That's pretty rare. We probably won't see very many of those. And of course, we want to see people get a tree permit if they want to put a new street tree in. And we want to make that as easy as possible, because we want to encourage people to plant new street trees. We don't want to be a barrier to that, but at the same time, we also want to make sure that it's the right kind of tree and it's being planted in the right place in the public, if it's going to go in the public right of way. You know, obviously, we only want to make sure that the roots are not going to affect any utility lines underground and that kind of thing. So that's the kind of, that's another thing that we want to see a tree permit for. So basically, those are our basic categories of permits. Next slide, please. And so what needs a tree permit? What's that threshold? So any tree that measures ten inches in diameter or more that's not otherwise exempt. So that's why I brought this lovely piece of wood here, because this is about ten inches. So anything bigger than this is going to need a permit for, under the new ordinance. And this is, this is a little bit bigger than the trees we have out in the parking lot here behind city hall between here and the library. So this is, this is the diameter of an established, you know, mature tree, just to give you an idea of what that is. It smells very piney. Been sitting in my office for a while, so I have a very good smelling office. Any tree that's been specially designated for protection would require a tree permit. On occasion, we have trees that are entitled, have a planning entitlement, you know, if they have a tree plan that's been approved, if they, somebody wants to modify that tree, a tree in that plan, that would, we would want to see that get a permit. And then we also have a provision that I talked about last time. If the council so chooses, they could designate a heritage tree if they wanted, some type of really exceptional significant tree in the community that everyone agrees is a symbol of the city or something that's very important to the community, that's a heritage tree. So we've already, we've created that special provision in here as a new, as a new tool for the city to use for those types of trees. Any type of, you know, replacement mitigation tree or something that's listed in a project approval that would require a tree permit. And sometimes on rare, on occasion, you might see trees that are required to be planted as part of a secret document as a mitigation measure. So anytime you're going to mess with that kind of thing, we want to make sure people are getting a permit. Next slide, please. But like I said earlier, the by and large, the vast majority of people in Millbrae, they want to prune their trees, they want to do tree trimming. That's what's going to be the vast majority of work. So we're proposing, right now, the city requires a tree permit if anybody's doing tree work in the public right of way. We plan on continuing that process. We want to kind of, you know, the recommendation we got back from our public workshop is that we, that was a good program, people like it, it's a no-fee permit. You just come in, you tell us some basic information, you can, you know, it doesn't, it's a very simple form to fill out, there's three questions on it, and we want to continue that for tree pruning citywide. So we're proposing that pruning on private property under this new tree ordinance, that it consists of a simple, no-fee registration that just identifies the time, date, and location of the tree work and who the contractor is. That's really all we need to know. You know, no plans, no site plan, no fee, just a simple registration with the city. That way, we can focus on if there's a problem, who is the tree contractor? So we can, instead of reaching out to the resident, if there's a problem, we can reach out to the tree contractor. And that would shift, you know, the implementation from the residents on to the professionals, just like we do with building permits. And we think that's a, we think that that is a positive step, it's the most bang for your buck, it's just the best way to do enforcement without, with the most streamlined, in the most streamlined manner. So that's our recommendation with implementation of this for tree permitting permits. Next slide, please. So as I said, tree trimming is less than twenty-five percent of a tree's mass, that doesn't require a tree permit. So if you want to go out there and trim, cut down a limb, you can do that, you don't need a permit to do it. You need a tree permit for major tree work, and that's if you're going to do more than twenty-five percent of a tree's mass, and that's what's defined as tree pruning. So this ordinance really, there's nothing wrong with going out there and doing regular maintenance of your tree. If you do, there's a benefit to doing regular treatment, or tree maintenance, because if you keep your tree in good condition, that avoids the need for a tree permit. And we already have, you know, standards, we have the ANSI A three hundred standard manual for how to trim trees, you know, that's all established, it's in place, so there's a benefit to having that regular tree maintenance, and we can help get the word out long-term, you know, how to do that for our residents. Next slide. There is a replacement tree formula. This is, this is generally unchanged from the last time, it was before council with a few exceptions. We, one of the recommendations that we received is they get people, give people the, the option of being able to pay into an in-lu tree replacement fund or use a combination of replacement trees and a reduced payment. The other flexibility item that was recommended is to let people, give people the ability to plant those replacement trees off-site if they don't have anywhere on their own property. Because on occasion, there are folks who just don't have anywhere on their own property where they could put another tree, and so we, and so the suggestion was, we should be able to work with residents if they need to replace a tree. So if they're taking a tree away and they got to put in a replacement tree, maybe, you know, your neighbor wants the tree or maybe somewhere else in the city, so that we can work with residents, we can give them maximum flexibility on tree replacement, but still get those replacement trees put in the ground, because that's really what we want to see. We want to see the, we want to grow the urban canopy, we want to make sure that we've got tree coverage, we want to increase the number of trees in our community, we don't want to go the other direction. And if you give people maximum flexibility in tree replacement, we can work towards that goal and still accommodate residents. So that's, that's our addition to the tree formula. And these are all, these are all box sizes that we're recommending that you can go to a nursery and get. These are the most common sizes for tree replace, for replacement trees. And our arborist says that a twenty-four inch box size with this caliber is also the type, the size of tree that would thrive the most. If you get bigger, what I'm told is the trees, the larger the tree, the less likely it is to survive. It's actually this size tree is optimal for, for long-term survival and growth. So next slide, please. So the ordinance, again, it does contain the provisions to protect tree roots, requires a tree permit for trenching or excavating in a tree protection zone, there's a graphic here that shows what that is. Just like last time, tree topping is prohibited, because that's how trees grow, they grow from the top. One of the other items that came up between now and last meeting was pollarding. And pollarding of street trees, we continue to have that provision here in the ordinance. There's any, we don't want, if you want to jump to the next slide, I'll show you what that is. This is what pollarding is. We really don't want to see people pollarding our street trees. It doesn't, you know, it's, it's not the most, I guess, it can leave these kind of attractive trunks, these clumps that we see, but we don't also want, we also want to allow people, if they do want to do it on their own property, this ordinance does let residents do pollarding on their own private trees if they so choose. So that is one difference between the last version of the ordinance and the current one, is that we continue to not allow pollarding in the street, but if you want to do it on your private property, yes, you could. Next slide, please. So fees and implementation was a big discussion item. As I said, at the workshop, a lot of residents, they're already paying a lot of money for a tree contractor to come, the last thing they want to have to do is pay another fee for a permit. Public Works does not charge currently for tree permits. We do charge for an encroachment permit if you have to close off the public right of way to do the tree work, if you have some big heavy equipment and you have to close off the street. There's a strong, there was a strong interest in maintaining that no-fee policy, so that's why we've recommended implementing this for tree pruning, to continue no fees. And as I said, you know, tree, major tree work requires people to use a licensed tree contractor, and so we feel that through this method, registration and monitoring would be the most cost-effective method of implementation to make sure that people are doing their tree work safely and responsibly. Next slide, please. And so with that, you know, we had this graphic before you last time comparing our proposed fees with other communities. I think this is a, this is, shows you that we're really in the ballpark here with our neighboring jurisdictions. We're proposing that obviously to continue the no-fee for our street tree permits and no-fee for tree pruning. And we would char, we're recommending to charge just the hourly rate that we have for all plan checks for other types of tree permits. So whether it's tree removal, a tree relocation, or a heritage tree, to charge that hourly plan check fee, which is two hundred and forty-eight dollars an hour. So if you come in and you want to get a tree removal permit, for example, that's probably not going to take very long for us to do. If it's a, let's say it's a half hour, we would charge you one hundred and twenty-four dollars for that permit. So that's, that's how we calculate it. So it is based on a fraction. If it's a fifteen-minute plan check, we would just charge you for fifteen minutes of time for that tree permit. And that's in line with what other cities do. Pacifica has a very similar, similar price. Our fees are actually a little bit less than many of our neighboring, our proposed fee is, our existing, I'm sorry, our existing hourly rate is less than most other of our neighboring jurisdictions. So I would say that we're in the ballpark, and this is our recommendation for the fee. And that hourly rate was part of our fee study that was done back in, just in two thousand and twenty-three last year, so that, that's a recent fee study that we did for our hourly rate. Next slide, please. And so with that, you know, this draft ordinance tonight, it contains the arborist's recommendations, it contains the recommendations of the committee enhancement advisory committee, and they, they, as part of their work program, they will continue to support the implementation of this ordinance, they're going to continue to work with staff on that. Right.
I thought we had more than that. All right, keep going.
With that, next slide, please. I'm happy to answer questions on this, I'm sure a lot of our council members have questions. Appreciate your questions here as I go through my staff report, so.
Excellent. Thank you, Director. Comment, questions from this council? Anyone? No, really? Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you so much. This is so informative and thorough, and I think makes it really clear for our residents. I just had one question on the fees or the hourly rate. Are there, like, scenarios where certain situations could take a long time, or is there a general maximum? Could we make a commitment that it would never go over a certain amount, just so as people are planning, they have some idea, you know, going in, it could be fifteen minutes or three hours, you know, which is a big difference in price?
Absolutely. The only thing that might take a little bit longer is a heritage tree, because that process would go to planning commission, it'd be a public hearing, it'd be agendized. Even that, maybe four hours tops. The only thing that might take a little bit longer is a heritage tree, because that process would go to Planning Commission, it'd be a public hearing, it'd be agendized. Even that, maybe four hours tops of staff time, including the meeting itself. So, but yeah, we can certainly make a commitment to residents to keep our, our processing time within a certain amount.
Hold on. Let me finish with the council comment, and we'll go to public comment after. Anything else? You're good? You have anything?
I was gonna go after public comment.
So that's my job. So do you have any comments from the council? Okay, all right, sounds good. Anyone else?
If, if I may, I should just point out to the council that we had an interest list on this item tonight. We did notify those folks on the list that this would be on the hearing this evening. They, I think some of them might be in Zoom, just to let you know.
See any hand raised in the public participation here?
Thank you.
That's not a hand raised, I imagine. Okay. City Clerk, is that speaker slip? Which item is it for?
This speaker slip is for item 12.
Okay, all right. So I don't have a speaker slip, I don't have anybody hand raised, coming back from closing public comment. Bring it back to the council. Councilmember, Ms. Schneider.
Couple of questions. Could we pull up staff report and page two? I just had a question on the encroachment permit fee. And I thank you for that clarification, that that fee is only administered when the street actually has to be closed. So all of us that have street trees, we're not paying for that through our tree trimmer. Because I've never been charged that much when I've, okay, good, that was one of my questions. Second question, mine goes more into the actual, so moving into the staff report and going to page six, the first whereas, or the whereas page. And I don't, I can pull up my version. I don't know if City Clerk can pull up that version.
This is in the attachment?
Yeah. It's just getting ready to hopefully vote on this?
Attachment one.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm sorry, I'm trying to figure out where I.
And the attachment to the staff report is a resolution and a finished product, so it is ready for first reading.
I, I would love to make a motion to approve, and I just had a couple of questions on it, and my computer is not pulling up that document. So.
Would you like me to add to you?
Okay, the whereas. No, no. I'm sorry. I can't even say it's been a long day. Actually, I think the staff report is great. I, I agree with Councilwoman Galen, your explanations have been really good. I think my question was possibly more, the whereas is fine, it's always in the, just went really small, City Clerk on my screen. I'm trying to scroll, I'm trying to scroll down your screen on the whereas, that's why it won't work. Okay, and then right here, it's actually the ordinance, which is page seven of the staff report.
Okay.
And a lot of this really goes to the education. It's page seven, section eight, point six zero, point zero two zero, findings. I love the way it's written. The only thing I would love to stress, because there's new data coming out on this, are the health implications of trees. And the fact that we are, all of Millbrae is heavily bombarded by particulates. The data that I have here from multiple sources, and I'm happy to send for the record, is urban trees filter air pollution. And we are, all of us, everyone in Millbrae, is above the 90th percentile on that. So I was hoping that in this first thing, it would include when you, particulate matters create asthma, and, and then the heat impact, when we have the tree canopy reduces heat impacts, which again, they are now finding, and if anybody's read the paper in the last week, multiple, multiple, multiple people of dying of the heat waves that we've been having. And I wanted that in the findings to make it really clear that we are talking about people's health. I know everybody thinks trees, oh, tree hugger, animals, all that, but it's actually human health on that. So my recommendation was just an addition to the word, to that sentence of, urban forest also provides health benefits, including reduce, reducing respiratory illness by reducing particulate pollution, stress and anxiety by reducing noise, and reducing heat stroke, and heat-related illnesses by the cooling effects on that section of finding. And if the council would agree with that, these are coming from the National Institute of Health. These are the new findings, that trees directly relate to people's health. It actually goes even farther, that communities with good tree coverage, possibly because of stress, actually can reduce the amount of violent crime, including the amount of gun violent crime. Trees can really do amazing things. So I'm happy with everything here. If we just add a little bit more on health, for those people that think it's only us tree huggers, it's really human health with everybody's. And that's kind of the sentence I came up with, that would go under findings.
We've, we've got that, and if there's a motion to do so in a second.
We'll entertain motion later. Let's get through all the council comments and questions.
That's, that's my comments on here. I have a couple of other things, you know, basically, once I read the staff report, I did a little bit more diving, and I'm currently diving into the impacts of the airport and the trains, frankly, on that. And this is something that we're in heavily, we're now considered federally heavily impacted area, and we need to be taking that. So this is a yay. My only last other thing is, I love the fact that we saved $75,000 by not using a consultant. Great job. What if we took that $75,000, and like the program that Public Works is currently doing for sidewalk repair, where the city takes responsibility for replacing the sidewalk, the resident agrees to pay, we create, use that $75,000 to roll out a program, probably not starting until 2025, when the tree trimming will happen, but we could use that $75,000 to make the people in those areas with city street trees feel a little less pain. Because that sidewalk replacement program is a fantastic program, and I know the city is just now bringing it back. So we could use that $75,000 for that, and possibly use that to replace some of the trees that we've lost in the urban canopy. Use that $75 savings right back into the community. That would be my request for this agenda item.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone else? Otherwise, I do. Okay. So it's my understanding that plans are not required. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And it's also my understanding, based on your presentation tonight and the staff report, that those who wish to prune or otherwise remove a tree would not be denied of doing so?
That's correct. If someone wishes to prune or remove a tree, they would not be denied. These are subjective, I'm sorry, these are objective criteria.
Okay, all right. And so.
Make that clear.
Right, okay. So when you say plan check, it's really not a plan check fee as much as a fee to process a particular tree permit?
It is. That's right.
It is planned, it are required.
That's correct.
Okay. So, and, and am I hearing you correctly, that the main purpose of this program is to ensure people use a licensed contractor when they come to do tree pruning or, or tree removal?
That's right. We want to make sure that they're, they're using a contractor, correct?
And is it also the state law that is already mandating that?
It's in the California Business and Professions Code, yes.
So it's already the state law? That's what I'm hearing?
That's right.
And, so I, I guess what I'm trying to get at is, what, what, what value are we adding by doing this, when the state law already mandate the usage of a licensed contractor when you're removing a sizable tree?
This grants us the ability to enforce these rules, to make sure that people are using licensed contractor.
So I'm, I guess, what I'm trying to get at is, there's a state law that says, you need to use a licensed contractor?
Correct.
And we're asking people to tell us when they're pruning or removing a tree, so that we can make sure that you are using a licensed contractor?
That's right.
When there's a chainsaw out there going on and.
That's right. So, and the, and the scenario is, we get a call, somebody says, hey, somebody's got a chainsaw and they're taking down a tree, and if we go out there, say, okay, you know, we say, do they have, we check that address, do they have a tree permit, and have they registered with us? And we can say yes or no. If it's a yes, then, okay, they're good, because they've got someone out there who's doing it properly. If it's no, we can go out there and enforce it. And that's what, that's, that's what this enables.
Hmm, okay. Yeah, I was just trying to make sure that this is not a redundant effort, that the state has already had in place.
Now, the state does not enforce this.
Okay, all right. So it's really an enforcement mechanism? It's what I'm hearing, what it gets down to it. So that you know that there's a tree trimming going on. All right. On the replacement formula that you have on the screen a moment ago, if you can just bring it back.
Couple more slides. There you are.
There we go. All right. So do we have some comparisons from some other cities within the county in terms of that replacement tree formula?
This is very consistent with, with the standard that you'll find in other communities. It is not exact, there is no similar, every city has a different tree ordinance, but this is the formula that was recommended to us, and this is a formula that you will find in other cities, maybe not necessarily San Bruno or Burlingame, but this is, this is what was recommended to us by our arbors.
Yeah, I was just hoping to see, you know, some comparison, what other cities are doing, for those may or may not have a tree ordinance, what the replacement formula would be, just to make sure that we're not overburdening any residents who wants to otherwise remove a tree. So I just want to make sure that we're within those framework. So if you can bring back some statistics, I would certainly be appreciative of that. Andy. So. Councilmember, Schneider.
I was just. When someone in Millbrae goes and wants to prune, trimming their tree, they simply go out and find it. When it's in our ordinance, it's a lot easier to find it. And to say, oh, I better go check this data point, this is not a spot on. In terms of our urban forest. I'm sorry. Sorry, City Clerk. If you look at sustainable Samhain tail under their new criteria on their website, you can pull up tree canopy. And you can see that Burlingame south of us, and I would say all the way down to probably Sunnyvale, have pretty darn good tree canopy coverage. We're okay. And then by the time you get to South San Francisco and Daly City, it's really bad. Now, when it's not a heat wave, maybe that's less of an issue, other than the fact that trees absorb carbon, so they're most definitely a carbon or climate change tree. We've already lost, I'm, I'm the one that grew up here. I can tell you from my neighborhood in Meadows, every house had a tree in front. Almost none of them have now. That urban forest, and those trees were stipulated, and, and City Manager, correct me, in the, the subdivision map of many neighborhoods in Millbrae, but Meadows specifically, it designated that a tree must be in front of the house. Now, they planted fruit trees which have a shorter lifespan. Fruit trees go senile, and most, and then they got wind blasted as the wind patterns changed, and almost all of them are gone. And it really changed the nature of the neighborhood I grew up in. Other neighborhoods like Marina Vista, the one that is most at risk of heat waves, and it's now federally listed as high risk for heat waves, has almost no trees at all. Somehow, that subdivision did not require trees. But this is a mechan, we have to replace an urban forestry. Yeah, and I tried looking up your neighborhood, which is a slightly different timeframe, and that's a whole other plan to go back, that gives the city some legs to say, hey, you used to have this forest. And in Meadows, anyway, on Helen Drive, those trees help slow traffic down. Those trees are all gone. So it's not so much a burden on the trees, but it is living in a climate change world where trees are going to keep all of us safer. All of those, the other example that I said where a tree trimming might be, if you've got a slope, I'm thinking of the houses on Crestview, or that, that have a slope and they've got trees currently holding that slope, if they want to cut in and cut down those trees because it's ruining their view, that hillside could fall down into the hill, the house below it. So there's a reason to have some sophisticated permitting, depending, or the cost of the permitting, depending on the degree of trees that are going to be removed on that. And we had that example, we had that discussion in that house that wants to be built on Larkspur. They want to cut down some trees. Those trees are holding that slope, and that slope has already failed. So there's a reason to have some of these trees have some costs involved in it.
I prefer not to use our permitting clause as a way to discourage people from pruning or otherwise remove a tree, certainly. But if you can go back to the, forward a few slides where you discuss the fees of the permit, Director. So you're proposing an hourly rate?
Only for removal, relocation, and the processing of a heritage tree.
And that is $248 per?
Per hour, or fraction thereof.
Okay, and this is per permit, or is it per tree?
This would just be per permit, not per tree, so.
So let's say if someone has, you know, three trees, let's say, that they wanted to either prune or otherwise remove, then you're not charging them three permits?
That would be based on the property, not on the individual tree.
I just want to make sure that we're not.
That would be onerous, and I want to commit right now that I would not ever want to do that, because that increases a burden for us as well.
Yeah, I just, you know, and do you have any idea, you know, or estimate, given the registry that you're proposing, how much staff time is that going to be? And I take it, since we're not charging people for these registry, this is not a cost recovery item?
Yeah. Well, right now, Public Works gets an average of about eight street tree requests a day, or per, I could say applications.
That's public tree.
For, for, in the public right-of-way.
Because we're now, we're talking about public and private.
Yeah, and I would expect it would probably be roughly double for trees and private property. Because usually, if somebody is doing a tree in front of their house, they're also going to do it for their yard. You know, they're going to just do the whole yard. They're not going to come in for the, the individual tree, right? So the thinking is that it's probably going to be consistent with that, since most people are going to want to do both at the same time. We'll probably see a little bit more, maybe up to double at most. But when you're doing a registry, what my goal is, and is one of the things that we're working on right now, is getting new permit tracking software in the city, is to make this an automated permit. We want this to be some type of a process where people can do it online, it doesn't require anything more than just letting us know, and it goes into a database automatically. And that's my ultimate goal, is that it just shows up, so there's no processing involved, there's no collection of scanning or anything like that. We would like to see ultimately this be an automated system.
Right. Yeah, so I would, I would like to see some comparison of the neighboring city in terms of the replacement formula, so that you can bring it back for a discussion, or a discussion for an adoption in the near term, relatively soon here. I just want to make sure that we're not overburdening our residents for those who wish to otherwise prune or otherwise remove a tree. Councilmember?
I, it was interesting in the staff report, that a year ago, we put this as a council priority, and the way the staff report was written, I want to make a motion and prove it tonight. The information you're requesting could come back for the second reading, and can we modify the ordinance at that time, if there is something in that? This has waited well, long enough. My guess is we've lost half of our urban forestry. Half of it. And that includes property values, and trees are being cut all the time, and it has huge implications. This has simply gone on long enough. So I hear what you're saying. There is a cost to house ownership. If you're a landlord, there's a cost to being a landlord. Right now, the tree next door to me, owned by an out-of-town property owner, is hitting my mother's bedroom windows, and it took me three years the last time without an ordinance to get that owner to properly maintain that tree. Yeah, I could pay to get that tree trimmed, but I should not have to pay for somebody who has a tree in their own backyard, and they're profiting off their house on that. The longer we delay, it's happened twice on neighbors on both sides on that. So I would like to get us, get this approved, but your request to want to see a comparison of the cost of permits, whatever you ask for from other cities, that can come back to us on the second reading. This has already been delayed since February.
Okay, so I understand your frustration. I get it. But, you know, this tree permit ordinance would not necessarily solve the problem that, you know, the neighbor's tree.
Yes, it will. It will solve a number of problems.
We're not here to force people to trim their tree. This is basically saying, if you trim a tree, you need to register. So this by no means will force your neighbor to trim a tree that's hitting your mother's So this by no means will force your neighbor to trim a tree that's hitting your mother's bedroom.
In the Highlands neighborhood, there have been so many sycamore trees in the last several months pollarded. This is part of get this done so the education program can roll out to tell people that you are going to get fined if you do, if you damage especially street trees, especially on them. The longer we wait, the more trees along Hillcrest. You only have to drive up Hillcrest and see how many in the last couple of months have been drastically damaged.
Uh, Andy, if I'm not mistaken, this is not related to street trees, correct? This is for the most part, um, private property.
This adds the private property component to the current.
The street tree portion of it, it's already in place, it does not change.
It's effectively, it's effectively the same with, uh, the exception about like the pollarding provision, for example.
So the street tree is protected either way.
Community enhancement is waiting on rolling out an education plan until this ordinance is adopted. They've been in a holding pattern frankly for years.
And this is an ordinance, right? This, we're legislating.
This is an, this is a draft ordinance before.
This is a draft ordinance in front of us, yeah. I mean, I, I mean, I was pretty clear that I like to see the comparison on those tree replacement formula, um, and that's, um, I think it's important that the public gets to know exactly how these formulas will work out in the end before we make a decision on it, but that's my.
The public that was concerned is not here tonight. There is no concern or we'd have people in the room.
We can agree to disagree, councilmember, right? So, but, um.
I'm going to make a motion and then the council can vote it down and anybody running on climate change, this will follow you.
Councilmember Pappan.
Thank you. Um, I'd be willing to go ahead with the draft here. I mean, if it's a draft, we're going to come back with another aspect that can fill in the mayor's thing, but I do think we should keep moving this along. I would have no problem with moving it along and then we can get the additional information.
I'm sorry, what does moving it along mean? Pass the first reading?
Yeah.
Thank you.
So this is a?
So I would second the councilmember's motion.
If I may.
Mr. City Manager.
I can't commit i- if, whatever the pleasure of the council is, if you adopt the ordinance and there's a second reading in two weeks, I can't commit that we can get the information that's been requested if that's a direction within two weeks. I mean, I think, you know, I ju- I just don't know, but. So, and it, it is a draft ordinance, but if the council adopts it, it's no longer a draft. It's an ordinance, second reading, in two weeks it becomes effective thirty days after the second reading.
Right, so, yeah, I mean, my, you know, my motion, if I can not suggest an alternate motion, is for us to bring it back, the, um, replacement schedule. Um, it's not like I'm seeing tree being falling down every day in front of people's front yard or backyard. Um, I'm not seeing an, an immediate urgency on all of this, but that's, I think it's important for us to, um, have a clear picture as to what an ordinance needs to look like before we're adopted. Um, this is a legislation, it's not to be taken lightly. So, um, that would be my alternate motion is to bring back the, um, replacement schedule with a comparison of the neighboring city and, um, see if there's a second.
Question.
Councilmember.
Burlingame's replacement schedule is four to one.
Okay.
Which is probably.
If I may.
Yes.
Because I know this has been the way this, there's a motion on the floor waiting for a second, so until there's discussion, there should be.
No. Got a second, motion second.
Correct, and is a substitute motion seconded.
I haven't heard a second to the substitute motion.
Okay, all right. Any further comments?
No.
Is it possible for the second reading? The reason I feel it's urgent is because this has waited nine years on that, but the reason, um, we have this reading, the second reading, the thirty days it can go into effect, MCAT can begin rolling out the education program when you start pruning trees, which is when they do leaf fall on that. So there is a timing issue for it. But in terms of the replacement schedule, mayor, how many cities would you like?
If, if I may, if I may, he made a motion and there wasn't a second and the motion failed on that. Unless you amend your motion.
No, 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 nope, nope.
And then, like I said.
All right, thank you, city manager.
Um, so, hold on one second. Um, if you come back, uh, on a second reading, can you modify the, um, replacement schedule? Or does it have to be going back to the first reading again?
You can modify on the second reading, but then you'll have to extend at least five days until you enact the ordinance.
So it's just extension of the enactment of the ordinance.
When it's before you for a second reading, that would require another, bring back the ordinance what's more to pass it at another meeting.
So it does not invalidate the first reading?
You can't have a second reading amend and enact that night, yes. That's, does that make sense to you?
So it can be.
You can amend tonight.
Right.
And then if it comes back at a second reading, uh, if, if there's further desire to amend, then you have to put the ordinance off for final enactment at least five days.
But it does not require a third reading?
Well, if you will, a third reading, but the, the rule is you can't amend and enact on the same night, that's the.
On the second reading?
Correct.
Okay, all right, fine. Any further discussion? City clerk, would you please call a roll?
So the motion is, uh, to waive the first reading and introduce the ordinance as presented. Yep.
If I may, just for governance here, I don't know if the councilmember's motion, when she made it, included the language of the findings.
Uh, yes, it would include the, just to.
If I may, yeah, yeah, okay, so it included, and I, I just, I just want to read it so we have it correctly.
Thank you.
The sentence, and I would recommend, I, what, what I wrote down, reducing respiratory illness, noise and stress reduction, and there was one other.
Um. Heat-related illnesses is the term that's being used by the NIH.
Is that okay to summarize it a little bit?
Yeah.
Please.
Yeah.
So we, we would say on that, um, reducing respiratory illness, comma, noise and stress reduction and heat-related illnesses.
Perfect, thank you.
I believe you read into the record the sentence.
Yeah, but that, what Tom's come up with is better.
Just summarize it a little bit.
It's better. I'm trying to get people to realize trees are important.
Roll call, please.
Okay, councilmember Snyder.
Aye.
Councilmember Pappan. Councilmember Cahalan.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Goodman.
Aye.
Mayor Fung.
No.
Okay. The city council waived the first reading and should so ordinance amending and replacing chapter eight point six zero, the Tree Protection Urban Forestry Program of Title Eight of Milbrae Municipal Code with amendment to the section eight point six zero point zero two zero findings language. The motion passed by a vote of four to zero, four to one with Mayor Fung dissenting.
Thank you so much. Item number twelve, discuss and consider the adoption of a resolution ordering the submission of a measure on term limits at the November fifth, two thousand twenty-four general municipal election and setting priorities for filing. Mr. City Manager.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our city clerk, Ms. Elaine Tran will be providing the staff briefing this evening.
Good evening, mayor, vice mayor and councilmembers. Tonight, staff is recommending the city council continue the discussion on term limits and consider ordering a submission of a term limit measure for the November fifth, twenty four, twenty twenty-four general election and setting priorities for the findings. Sorry, file, filing. At the last city council meeting on June twenty-fifth, the city council discussed a modification of term limits set by the nineteen ninety-seven voter-approved measure that council, that limit council, um, to two successive four-year terms in total of eight years. During the meeting, the members of the city council mentioned that the current term limits hinder the city's ability to maintain consistently leadership, representation on regional boards throughout the county and Bay Area. Staff was directed to bring back a proposed measure and prepare analysis of extending term limits or removing it entirely, as well as provide the timeline if the city were to submit a measure for the November fifth general election. Thank you. Of the twenty cities in the county, only six cities have term limits and fourteen cities are without term limits. Pacifica, Milbrae and Foster City have two consecutive term limits. City of Samatayos and San Bruno have three consecutive terms and Rowett City have four consecutive terms. It should be noted that the Samatayo County Board of Supervisor are not eligible to serve more than three consecutive terms in office. Cities with term limits require councilmembers who have reached their term limits to sit out at least one election cycle before they can run for office again. If the councilmember's term end while holding a regional appointment, the regional position will be vacated and the appointing body would select another member potentially from a different jurisdiction to fill the role. Next slide, please. Regional representation and leadership positions are important to the city as it enhances the city's ability to advocate on issues that affect the region in transportation, environmental sustainability, economic development, grant funding opportunities and other resources for local projects. Leadership position can facilitate conversation and foster collaboration with cities facing the same challenges to find a collaborative approach that lead to a creative and effective solutions. To effectively search on, uh, serve on regional boards, councilmembers need time to familiarize themselves with responsibility, with the responsibilities and advance to leadership positions. This process frequently spans more than two terms on council. Two terms does not allow Milbrae City Council to position themselves for appointments due to lack of tenure. Three or four terms will be provided, uh, will provide a significant advantage for Milbrae elected leaders to benefit city governance in a regional context. If the council would like to propose a change in term limits, it is recommended the city council consider extending the term to no more than three to four successive four-year terms to enhance then, um, continuity and effectiveness in the regional representation. Next slide, please. Pursuant to government code three six five zero two, any proposal to limit the number of terms a member of the city council may serve on the city council shall apply prospectively only and shall not become operative unless it is submitted to the electors of the city at a regularly scheduled election. Any majority of votes cast on the question favor the adoption of the proposal. This means that any proposal to limit the number of terms a member of the city council can serve can only take effect in the future. It cannot be applied retroactively. The proposal will only become effective, it is presented to the cities during a regularly scheduled election and receive majority vote. The proposed draft ballot question is, shall the city council term limit ordinance be updated stating that no person shall be eligible to serve for more than blank successive four-year terms be approved? Next slide, please. The table here shows the timeline if the city council would like to submit the measure to voters for November fifth election. E minus is how many days to election day? The first action of the city council is to adopt the resolution ordering the submission of a measure on the term limit at the November fifth election and setting priorities for filing. And, um, E eighty-eight, that is the deadline, um, August ninth is the last day to file the resolution with the county to add a measure to the voters. Primary arguments of no more than three hundred words are due on August thirteenth. The city attorney's impartial analysis is due on August twentieth. And I just want to make a note, there was a typo on the staff report. The rebuttal arguments will be due on August twenty-third. And also like, um, there's an error on this table and I apologize for that. The last item is actually due on August twenty-third. Uh, no more than two hundred and fifty words for rebuttal argument. Okay, the cost for three district council seats and a citywide measure is estimated to be eight, eighty-eight thousand and eight hundred dollars. The fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five general fund budget includes a preliminary election budget of seventy thousand. If the council would like to proceed with the measure, it would be an additional eighteen thousand eight hundred allocation to the general election budget. And, um, the recommendation is discuss and consider the following regarding term limits. Decide on the total number of terms a member can serve on city council and also adopt the resolution ordering the submission of a measure on term limits at the November fifth election and setting priorities for filing arguments for and against the ballot measure. And I'm available for any question. As also should be noted, we, the city council did receive correspondence from two members of the community regarding this item. And it was sent to you by email, I believe everyone received it.
Okay, sounds good, thank you, city clerk. All right, I'd like to open it up for the council for questions and comments. All right, councilmember Anne Schneider.
Um, one of the advantages of the Fourth of July event was everybody coming and talking to you. What I'm generally picking up from the public is, uh, for the most part, they are open to a change in term limits. They wonder between three and four-year terms on that. Um, my personal recommendation, personally, I would want to get rid of them entirely and be like the majority of the cities in the county, but I don't think our public is ready for that. But I would recommend or suggest a four-year term limit, um, a, a four, four-year term limit based on my conversations with the public and people who have been contacting me. It gives that flexibility, um, to, to do the long-term planning. And maybe get us onto the air resources board or the regional water board, some of the really ones that are extremely hard to get on to.
Okay, all right. Councilmember Pappan.
Um, for the record, this does not impact current, um, representatives, so just want to, people are thinking, you know, this has an impact on us, it does not. Um, the current limits apply. Um, so I just wanted to say that.
Okay, all right. Ms. Cahalan?
I think in addition to discussing the number of four-year, uh, consecutive terms, um, in the report here, looking at the other cities and including Milbrae, it has, uh, it stipulates what, uh, counts if you serve a partial term due to an appointment and how that counts towards your terms, uh, overall. So I think we should discuss and decide that. Um, and if we are looking at something, you know, extending especially as long as four terms, I think it's worth us discussing a lifetime limit, an overall lifetime limit.
Okay, so perhaps, hold on one second, um, legal? So, um, if I can, if you can help address the questions on perhaps a half a term or less than half or more than half a term, um, on appointments? How does that, um, count when it comes to the current two-term limit? Um, and should we consider, you know, extending those term limits?
I think we drafted into the ordinance language to address that issue, so, uh, the first.
The current ordinance or the proposed ordinance?
The proposed ordinance, and I think our current ordinance also does.
It, it, uh, I believe it does, yeah.
It does.
Yes.
I, I think the idea, and I think Mark Hirschman is someone who, uh, had this happen, you know, you, you, if you are appointed to complete the balance of, of a term, uh, you still have the opportunity under the law in place and under the ordinance as drafted to have two full successive terms following that.
Yeah.
Regardless, sorry, hold on, regardless, does it take into account whether that term that they're fulfilling or the appointee fulfilling, it's more than half or less than half?
Does not.
It doesn't take into account?
Does not take that into account.
Okay, all right, does it answer your question?
And, and you have a follow-up. Can I, can I just clarify too? That happened, um, when councilmember Oliver passed away.
Yes.
And Annie Oliva was appointed, so.
That is correct. It's happened, I think, a couple times in our history.
Okay, follow-up question, Ms. Cahalan?
Yes, um, on the staff report on page four, it has a sample of the statement of the ballot measure. On the ballot measure, would that have to be included as well, the partial term component?
I believe that the ordinance will be included in the ballot materials. Um, so what we are required to do is succinctly kind of give the nugget of the question to the voters.
Clarifying that.
Yes, um, and all the vote, voters can also access the actual language. And also, the, um, the city attorney will draft an impartial analysis of, you know, whenever you have something on the ballot, it begins with an impartial analysis, no advocacy, just the facts, ma'am. In the impartial analysis, I can make sure that that issue is addressed because it's in the proposed language of the ordinance, both existing and proposed.
And I think this is something as we discuss three terms or four terms to think about. If someone's appointed, um, and has three years plus four terms, you know, we're looking at twenty-something years, so.
Oh, nineteen?
Nineteen, yeah, or nineteen, sorry, quick math. Um, so just something for us to think about as we discuss and decide.
Okay, all right. Councilmember Schneider.
I would just add that, uh, in twenty sixteen, when we reevaluated the committees and commissions, we put term limits on them at that time with the same language that the, the city attorney has said it. If you fill a partial term regardless of time, it does not count for your terms on that. And just so that everybody knows, a lot of those, and, and, and when that ordinance kicked in, it did, this is another thing for us to think about, did not count the terms previously served, which in a way is good because sometimes it's been hard to get people to apply for our committees and commissions. And there are some of our committees and commissions where people are coming up to their twelfth year, um, or in the next couple of years are going to come up in their twelfth year and they're darn good. So I would hate to lose people who put in and give both their knowledge and their time on that. Um, it's something to revisit for them.
On that issue, I could clarify, Mr. Mayor, state law is really clear that any rule or new rule or amended rule has only prospective effect, so it wouldn't affect prior service.
Councilmember Pappan.
And I'd like to point out to my colleague, uh, Ms. Cahalan, there are always term limits. The public decides whether you continue service or any of us continue service or not. So, you, as was stated, it, it is up to the public and always has been and always will be, um, so we all are. So, we all are in that realm here. I just wanted to point that out.
Okay. Further comment, questions? I'd like to take public comment, otherwise I can bring it back. All right. We have one public comment, March Colopietro.
I believe in term limits and no one should be a lifetime council member. The maximum, in my opinion, should not exceed three, four-year terms with no intermissions in between. We have many wonderful people in the community that would like to serve on the council. And we want people with new ideas, we want people with, you know, love of community. And the longer there would be the term limits, the less time it is for these people, for those people to serve their community. And these are people who love our community as we do. And just one other thought is, I just want to mention that we should have one mayor for all districts and rotate as we do now so that every person has an equal time to be a mayor in this city because everybody works hard. Thank you.
Thank you, March, for your comment. All right. I don't suppose we have anybody online. Elaine?
At this, no, there's no hands raised.
Thank you. Closing public comments? All right, bring it back to the council. Any further questions, comments, suggestions, motions?
Okay, I'll make the motion. Motion to bring a measure to the November 5th, 2024 general election that changes term limits in the city of Millbrae to four terms. Period. Sorry, Angie, I don't believe in lifetime terms. Imagine you're 24 years old, you get elected, you go off, you serve a couple terms, you go off, have kids, you retire, you have time to give back to the community. I don't want to lose that flexibility. And contrary to Marge, I'm currently trying to find people to run for my district, and it is not easy to find people who want to run. So, we need to open it up, we need to make it open and available. And I do believe in this day and age of social media and more information, more of us will get voted out, more incumbents can get voted out if they're not doing their job, and that provides the opportunity for new people. Is without the comment, sorry about that, Mayor. Just to get us started.
All right. I do want to wait one comment. City manager, could you repeat at the beginning of the meeting that we're receiving grants from PCE? How much was that? $280,000, if I'm not mistaken, in totality?
That is correct, Mayor.
What was the mayor's question?
$280,000 total, and I think we still have a few more coming.
Correct.
Right, so, I was, you know, the basis of all this discussion was that it is difficult for our elected official within the city to get into leadership position regionally with the two-term limit because most of the other cities within the county don't even have term limits, or those who does have longer-term limit than we do. I was fortunate and was blessed enough to serve on PCE, Peninsula Clean Energy, where I was able to get into the executive board and also the surplus funds committee, where finally was able to make some decision and champion to have an equitable distributions of those 320 million surplus funds where every city will get some level of funding to improve our infrastructure. And that is, the $280,000 that we just announced today is a result of that effort. And so, it proves that it is fruitful to enable our own colleagues to serve regionally in a leadership role so that, so that we can get our fair share of resources that the city need that will help improve the lives of our community and, you know, improve our infrastructures and so on and so forth. So, the basis of that decision or that discussion is to enable these opportunities. And so, I think there is definitely a merit to increasing the term limit. So, the question there is whether it's three terms or four terms, I believe there needs to be some sort of a term limit. You know, I don't think all of us, or any one of us should be here in perpetuity. So, some term limit is a good thing so that fresh blood and fresh ideas can come in. So, I think that's, that's kind of the gist of it as far as where I stand on that issue. You know, I'm pretty open between three or four term, but I think ultimately the decision-maker is not the five of us as much as the rest of the 23,000 of us in the city who need to make a decision on November 5th as to whether or not they want to reward our council members to serve more than eight years. So, I think that's the ultimate decision. Councilmember Schneider?
Thank you, Mayor. I would, I may have the timing wrong, Councilwoman Pappin would know, but I believe it was in Councilwoman Pappin's fourth term, or maybe it was the very end of her third term with the break in between, that finally got her the votes to get her on MTC on that. I mean, that's just an argument in favor of four terms over three terms, but I may have the timing wrong. I remember being in the restaurant in Burlingame, and so it was probably pre-COVID.
Third. But, but again, I attempted previously in my, one of my first two terms and was unsuccessful. So, and when I approached it again, it was due to, I think, accountability of the prior holder of the seat that made the difference. So, that, to answer your question.
But again, doesn't that point to a fourth term on that? Because had everybody known that you were termed out then, chances are that might have affected that vote.
Yes.
Mr. Vice Mayor?
I was just, you know, I think a lot of what we're talking about is relationships.
Yes.
If we're talking about getting appointed and-
And opportunities as well.
And creating opportunities on these regional boards, it could be your first term, it could be your second term, it definitely can be your third. But if you can't, or if you lack the ability, and no judgment towards anyone on this council, but in general, if you lack the ability to create and forge strong relationships with individuals, it's going to be difficult if you had 10 terms to get individuals to support you. I support, if I had to support an additional term, it would be three and no more. I'm okay with two because I do believe those that voted on this knew what they were doing. But I understand that if there's a need for change and if someone was to say, Maurice, what is your true opinion of this? I would definitely say no more than three. And put it to the voters to decide on that. But for us to say we're going to put it to the voters and say four, I don't think that's appropriate. I don't think that's something that's beneficial for this council nor the community.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Any further comments, questions? Councilmember Haley? Go ahead. Okay, all right. Councilmember Pappin, do you have anything? Your minute has been shortened.
I think, you know, in talking with the public and taking this to the voters, I definitely see, you know, benefits to extending to three. Being in this role has definitely changed my thoughts and understanding on term limits and how much we can do and how much you learn in the very beginning. But I think for the public, there are concerns about term limits. So, you know, if we go to the ballot at four and lose, then we have to wait till 2026 to go back again.
It just has to be an election.
Okay. So, that's something to consider, do we want to take a chance and have to do it twice? And I think the public would be more open to three. I also agree that it's a lot about building relationships to get ourselves out there. And I think, you know, this is an act of service. If you look at the history of our country and even picking the presidents and the number of terms of our presidency, you know, it was about not, not having people in perpetuity and to learn to have change, to have new people. And I don't think we have to, as someone moves on, we don't have to lose that history and that knowledge. People can mentor the new folks coming in. I know for me and my roles and the jobs that I've had over the years, as I, most of my jobs I've had, a big part is about creating relationships. And for me, it's really important as I create those relationships, it's not about me and the other person in the place, but it's about building that relationship for the organizations for the long term. So, I'm proud that the places I've worked in the past still have many of the relationships I built because they weren't about me building that relationship, but about building it for the organizations together. And I think that's our roles as public servants to be able to do as much as we can and take advantage of the time that we have and then step back and let others have a turn, mentor them, support them to continue to verge forward. This isn't a career, this is public service. So, I, I, I think three terms will be more supported by our voters.
Okay, all right. And then I've got Councilmember Pappin to follow with Mr. Vice Mayor.
Yeah, again, I'm inclined to give the voters as much choice as they possibly can because that's been an issue here. And as Councilmember Schneider and I are both looking for people to run in our districts, it's very, very difficult to find people to run for office. It's probably the whopping salary. It's not necessarily a career as was suggested. Public service is really a desire to help represent your community here. So, I mean, I would be open to three or four just because of what we're going through right now in trying to find people to run for office and it's, and really providing the voters with as much choice as possible. So, I could live with either one of those.
Mr. Vice Mayor? And then Schneider after.
Couple things, can we get correction? There was a statement that was made that we could do this next year if we wanted. I thought it had to be a general election. Okay.
Hold on, can we get Legal to clarify that?
I believe it does have to be a general municipal election-
Right.
-when a question of this nature is presented to your voters.
So, it's either November 2024 or November 2026.
Exactly.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask that. And then, oh, no, you're fine. This issue of being able to find candidates, yes, that's all of our responsibility, but there is also an opportunity for us to allow candidates to find themselves. I do know in my role with the Democratic Party here in San Mateo County that there are candidates in some of these districts. I can't divulge, nor will I divulge who or, yes, I'm sorry. But what I don't want us to do or get in the practice of is utilizing tactics of fear, uncertainty, or doubt to push a narrative that somehow this is the way, and the only way, to get candidates. Because in the same vein, we say, hey, there won't be a problem because there's tons of people that'll run. And so, what is true? And so, we can't have it both ways. I do believe that three terms, if we had to put something on the ballot, is appropriate. I do believe it's incumbent on all of us to cultivate our bench, and that's incumbent on us as council members, city staff, to encourage and to support commissioners, to take on additional responsibilities and trainings for all individuals, all the way down to our youth advisory committees, to instill a sense of community stewardship that promotes opportunity and access for all to be able to be represented up here. And I think that creates the representation in what we want to see from our community. And so, I just, you know, I just want to make sure that we do not fall prey to saying, hey, if we don't do this, we're going to have a problem or we're having a problem. Regardless, something will happen, and if it doesn't, you all, we have a mechanism called the appointment process. You know, there's a process for appointment if there's individuals that aren't running, and there's a process for that. And so, you know, let's not, if we're going to do this, let's be factual, let's be honest, and just do the right thing. So, I know there's a motion on the floor. I don't know if we want to call a question or continue to have conversation or debate. There was no second. I think Councilwoman Snyder-
Okay, I'll, I'll get to it. I'll get to it, I'll get to it. Just relax, I'll get to it. All right. Councilmember Schneider, you have a follow-up? I'd like to give you the mic.
Yeah, my motion was kind of a, let's get us started, like, we have to have a talking point. Is it three, is it four, is it never?
Right.
It sounds to me like we have, never is not good. I hear two for three, two for four. We haven't heard from the mayor. To be honest, three or four, I'm okay with. I had to give us something to start with, and I do think that the public is more comfortable. And I think the vice mayor brings up a good point that if it does have to be a general election, I did read the staff report, it said, oh, he didn't say general election. So, any other special election next year could qualify, but let's play it safe and at least make some change for the sake of getting into these positions. You know, and I know that the mayor has talked about leadership. It really also comes down to where the money goes. And I will tell you that in my attempt to try to get on the air resources board, of which I have professional training with, I got beat out because a queen maker in South San Francisco who had served for many, many years knew how to play the game better than I did. And that's a part of the game. It's not just, A, you have a nice relationship with people, it's how many phone calls do you make to get on to these things? And that was eye-opening because I served on committees with this person and I felt black, backstabbed on that to somebody who had had no experience on air issues, period. And that was my awakening to realize that a lot of council appointments have nothing to do with your experience, have to do simply with politics. And that's the downside to your comment that we're civil servants and we're just here to serve. I hear you, but I also feel that your elected officials should bring skill sets forward. And just, hey, I want to run for council and nobody else is there and you get in, to me, is not good. I think that's one of the problems Millbrae has had for decades, is having people that really haven't had the skill set or the desire to do the homework to find out why when Bart came in, an eminent domain and took so much money off the property tax rolls, why we didn't write then say, wow, we're going to have a structural deficit. It takes a long time to learn how to do this stuff. So, again, I'm okay with three, but lastly, to the vice mayor, me personally, I do not like when people are appointed to fill a position. To me, that takes away the vote of the people. I will always err on, if we're going to do something like that, then either we hold out or we call a special election regardless of the cost because appointments mean that whoever is the majority of that body chooses whom they want. So, that's my position on, yeah, you can fill it with an appointment. I'm not a fan of that. So, I could change my motion, but we haven't heard from the mayor.
So, all right. So, you made an original motion, unless you want to change it, let's see if there's a second. All right, so, there's a motion for four-term?
This is for four-term.
She made a motion for four-term?
If I may, you know, for the record, based on the commentary, on page three of five of the staff report, the first paragraph under the heading "Election Timeline for the November 5th, 2024 General Municipal Election," there is a government code 36502 that is stated, and in that government code, it does say, "That shall apply prospectively only and shall not become operative unless it is submitted to the electors of the city at a regularly scheduled election."
Regularly scheduled election.
Not a general, just a regularly scheduled.
Regularly scheduled.
So-
But I don't know if there are primaries in 2025.
Sorry, hold on, sorry, hold on. So let me just confirm that with legal counsel one more time.
Yes.
So it is, does not have to be a general election on an even year?
And I believe a regularly scheduled would mean a, an election that is otherwise scheduled by the state. So it could be a primary election or a general election.
Okay, so it could happen again in 2025?
Well, yeah, I mean, but, yeah.
There's always an election in every year.
Well, I'm not so sure of that.
I would think if, I'm sorry for interrupting. If there is a 2025.
It would be the primary in 2026.
Of the primary of 2026.
Yeah, not next year.
All right. I just wanted to get clarification so that everybody's on the same page, so we're dealing with the same facts. I don't want.
No propositions in odd years? California, San Francisco goes a whole two years without local measures?
Yes, some are charter cities and it, but, but the regularly scheduled would be the primary in 2026.
All right.
Stay correct.
Unless there's further comments from this council, we've done public comment already, there's a motion for four terms.
Is the mayor going to input here or are you just waiting for a vote?
Well, there's a, I, I think I provided my input. Yes.
Well, I was just, we hadn't heard exactly from the mayor on that. If you could clarify before any motions taken here. And, and if I could, may I? So the staff report was incorrect here. Will that be corrected? You said the date. This is 20th to 23rd on the, your chart. I, I just wonder how that record.
What is incorrect of the staff report?
The staff report.
Yeah, well, I'm just saying, if somebody is about to look at the staff report after this, will it be corrected? Is my, so, it, it, yes, it was, it says August 20th.
Row that you see, that E77, is actually supposed to be like E74, August 23rd, that the rebuttal argument should be filed.
I am asking, will this be corrected if someone looks this up here after?
Yes. I will correct that on the staff report and re-apply.
Thank you very much. That's what I wanted to be clear about.
Mr. Mayor, public comments closed.
No, sorry, march.
Public comments closed. It's, it's, you can't.
Mr. Mayor, may, may I, because of past practice and think, you, we need to have decorum and public comment is closed.
Public comment is closed.
I mean, from staff's recommendation.
All right.
So let's just.
Let's just keep moving along here. All right, so I'm going to make a comment here. Everybody, just, I, I think the ultimate decision maker on how long we stay in office and keep working for the city rests with the people, rests with the voter. We've seen that over and over again and we will continue to see that. And that has always been true and it will continue to be true. Whether it is three term or four term, it's just giving these individuals more opportunity to serve, should they choose to serve. But if the constituency wants somebody else, they will make that decision. They will make that decision on behalf of the city because they are the ultimate supreme governor, for lack of better words, for the particular jurisdiction. So giving it an extra term or extra two term, it's just giving someone willing to serve an opportunity to serve. So from that standpoint, I'm more on the side of giving people the opportunity to serve and let the voter decide, should they choose, not to reelect that particular representative. So I will second your motion on the four term. Moving forward. Can we have a roll call, please, unless there's further comment or alternate motion?
Yeah, I have an alternate motion.
Okay.
That, that, that is fine. What that will do is give us the input, assuming that passes, for what we state in the ordinance that we'll put before the people. There is a resolution also that you will need to pass. So maybe let's take this vote first and in the resolution, you have to designate the council members who will be writing the arguments. So there are two, you could take two actions.
Okay, well, we'll deal with the second action after we have a decision on the first. Right. And then, Mr. Vice Mayor, you have a comment?
Yeah, I'd just like to make a second motion.
Yeah, sure.
For three terms.
Okay, all right. And then do we have a second on the alternate motion?
I would second that.
So you're seconding the alternate motion? Correct? Okay. Councilmember Schneider?
Comment. I have to tell you, I'm now kind of ambivalent, I'm kind of, oh, oh, three terms might be easier to pass.
Okay.
Which would set us up, I mean, I had hoped tonight, to even make it more complicated, we would look at what the public is really asking me for, which is districts versus elected mayor. That's not on the agenda tonight. Because it's that gap now, by not voting at large, it creates really long periods on that. It sounds like I'm the swing vote here then, either on three years or four years. What do other people think? What have you heard in terms of ability?
Listen, so, unless you're changing your motion, because you made a motion at the beginning.
Well, you've already got a motion second, so we've got to vote on three, two.
Hold on, hold on. So you made a motion for four, there's a second for the four, for the four term, are you waving your hands?
Yeah, we have an alternate motion that's been seconded.
Correct.
We have to vote on that one first.
Right, yes, and we take that one.
So I'm commenting on where I'm standing on that.
All right.
And I'd love to hear from our other council members who've also been hearing from the public on term limits. Where do you think the public is at on three versus four? I didn't necessarily get a lot of feedback on three versus four. Okay. Hmm. So it's go for the gusto or be more cautious and have a greater chance of passing?
City Clerk, would you please call the question? Is it, from a Roberts rule, is it alternate motion first?
Yes. Okay. So this is for the alternate motion for three terms, three conservative terms. Councilmember Schneider?
I'm going to make a comment. Vote.
We're calling for a vote.
I know, I know. Redwood City is at four terms. Redwood City has accrued a great deal of power. I will vote no on three terms.
Councilmember Pappin?
No.
Councilmember Kalen?
No.
Vice Mayor Goodman?
No.
Okay. Vice Mayor Goodman?
Aye.
Okay. Mayor Fung?
No.
Okay. The motion fails by a vote of two, two, three.
So go back to the original motion?
This is the original motion for four conservative terms. Councilmember Snyder?
Aye.
Councilmember Pappin?
Yes.
Councilmember Kalen?
No.
Vice Mayor Goodman?
Aye.
Mayor Fung?
Aye.
Okay, the council passes the term of four conservative terms for consideration for the measure by the vote of three to two with Councilmember Kalen and Vice Mayor Goodman dissenting.
Okay, now legal?
Sorry, there's a correction. Yeah, it's four to one.
Sorry, one, I apologize. Four to one, the motion passed.
Okay, all right.
So the motion for four conservative terms, I am, oh, sorry, for four conservative terms passed by a vote of four to one with Councilmember Kalen dissenting.
Okay, legal?
So now what's before you is the procedural requirement that you've taken recently.
Yes.
To put this measure on the ballot.
Right.
There is a resolution in front of you. And that resolution will place the measure on the ballot and will make sure that the measure specifies four terms because that is what you have just voted on. But also this resolution at the top of the second page of the, the attachment one has you authorizing, designating two members of the council who would be signing the arguments and the rebuttals. And you have that right because you are putting this measure on the ballot to designate two council members to represent the council and advocate the position of four terms in the argument process.
So we have to do that now?
Well, I suppose you could do this on July 23rd. If you want to think about it, we could bring the resolution back on the 23rd. We just need to get this resolution in. Are you showing me something that I need?
It's August 13th is the deadline.
Yeah. August, is that what you're showing me?
So I guess the first question is, do we have two volunteers who want to volunteer to write the advocacy for this ballot measure?
I'm looking at the councilwoman at the other end of the table, who is a wordsmith by trade. I had hoped that that, if there is no one else, I'm happy to help since I'm the one that brought this forward in the first place.
We need to.
Yeah. Councilwoman Pappin, would you work on this with me?
I prefer to wait.
If we want to wait two weeks, we can do that.
Yeah.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
So City Clerk, we could bring this back at your 20th, your July 23rd.
So bring back the decision, who will be the advocate for this ballot measure?
Bring back the horrible resolution, placing this on the ballot and designating the two council members who would represent and write the arguments and the rebuttals.
Kim?
Oh, you mean, one of us would have to write the rebuttal?
Well, together, the two council members as a team would do both.
Would do both.
So what, what happens in the process of, there is a date when arguments are due for and against. So anyone who has a desire to submit an argument against what you put on the ballot and then you as a council putting this on the ballot have the opportunity to put an argument in to advocate for it. Arguments for and against are due at the same time. And then I think a couple of weeks later, 10 days later, the rebuttals are due. Each side can write a rebuttal.
Ah, okay.
You see what I'm saying? So there will be two written arguments. One is a 300-word argument for, and then you would have an opportunity to have a 250-word rebuttal against whatever was submitted in opposition.
But the same two council members write both?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Question?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can't we just say we're putting it on the ballot and deal with the other part later? Can't we just do that? Are you, you're requiring us?
Well, then, yeah, as long as at some point you're going to need to designate.
Understand that.
There is a provision, if I may, Counselor, if the city clerk can read it as an alternative.
An alternative. Okay. On page four of the staff report, if the council chooses not to authorize any member to write argument, then any individual who is eligible to vote on the measure or a bona fide association of citizens or a combination of voters, an associate may file a written argument for or against the ordinance pursuant to Election Code, Section 9282.
Great. So let's just put it on the ballot.
So what you're saying is you don't have to designate anybody.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
But if that's the case, then I could probably revise, if, if there's a desire to do that, I just need to revise the resolution to state that anyone could file.
That's what.
That's what the council would adopt and then we would change the resolution, the direction of the city council when it's published.
Not a problem. So if you don't want to designate, you don't have to. But this is your opportunity.
I guess what I'm hearing, I guess what I'm hearing is, we can have up to two council members who write these arguments. And if there are not two council members who wants to volunteer to write it, and if only one, then the one can do it, we just have space up to two. Am I hearing you correctly, Legal?
That's correct.
As a member of the public, not a representative of the elected body.
Okay. All right. So sounds like we have one volunteer. Oh, no.
Comment?
Okay.
Okay, so at a four to one vote, we voted to move forward with four decisions.
Correct.
If council doesn't take the effort to write it, that doesn't put a lot of, of.
Weight?
There we go. Weight or confidence between asking the public. So I really do think that we should try to designate two people and, you know, and I, it doesn't have to be me if there's two other people. I just wanted to get us moving on that. But I do think that we, as a city council, or at least those of us who voted for the four years, would write the four terms, excuse me, would write something to the public why we think this is valuable and not just let it go to the ballot with nothing.
All right, got it. So would you volunteer to be one of them?
I would.
Okay, all right. Do we have another volunteer? That's what I'm trying to get to.
No.
You don't? Okay. Would you like any?
Again, I think we should just wait on that aspect of it at this point in time. We have an option, so.
How much time do we have? Hold on, hold, hold on. How much time do we have to get the second council member who wish to be an advocate for this ballot measure?
Anytime up to August 13th, this council could meet at a.
So what I'm hearing?
If it's a part of the resolution.
But if I, the resolution amend?
Well, they, they could amend the resolution, right? I mean, I think if you're not ready to take action now, we will just take it out of the resolution. We don't have to say one way or another, just take it out. They won't have designated.
Okay.
And at some point in the future, in the next couple of weeks or so, you could bring it back and have a resolution to designate two members.
Yes, that's fine.
Mr. Vice Mayor?
Is that how it, how it reads or does it read that if it's not a part of the resolution, then it could happen, but it would be as members of the public? Is that how it reads?
Well, the way the law reads is if you don't designate two members, then members of the public can take that role.
But it doesn't specify if you designate as the part of the resolution or separate and apart?
Right. And I think what I would do is just have this section four taken out of our resolution.
Sounds good.
I believe we just need to have the argument submission date available. Just saying, you know, like, people who want to file for or against could submit by this date and just not have, like, and just state, like, anyone who wants to file can do so. And then we could bring back another item stating that if the council desired to appoint who to write it for the measure, could do so at that time.
Okay. I mean, we could do it either way.
Yeah.
I, I, I don't think they have to restate in the resolution what state law is, but it might be helpful if the council does not want to designate members to make clear that state law would allow someone else, another voter in the district, in the city, to do that.
We're not seeing that at this time.
Okay. All right. So we have currently one volunteer who would want to be an advocate.
So my question, you know, we do this so rarely, I'm not an expert. Could we, could we have one? Why not? We have to have two?
That I would have to.
Again, I think you just.
I don't know.
I don't know. I'm wondering if you could just have one.
Right. Does it bring the whole thing back?
Bring the whole.
Yeah.
Bring it back in two weeks? Is that what the pleasure of this council, bring it back for two weeks with the?
Because generally, we take August off so that we wouldn't.
No, that would be the second meeting in July.
Yeah.
Yep.
So we'd only have one more meeting before the deadline?
Oh, that's way before the.
Yeah.
Councilmember Schneider?
Forgive me if I'm not seeing this correctly. So we've got one more council meeting before a break. We have some other stuff happening out there that may call for a special election in August, but we're going to try not to have any special council meetings in August. So wouldn't you all like to see what was written and wordsmith it at our next July meeting so that it's done before it goes to the registrar of voters in August? Wouldn't you like to have a comment of what somebody like me might write and be able to wordsmith it in a public forum? I'm sorry, I've never been involved in something like this, I really don't know how it, how it works. I mean, that would be the reason for doing it now. I understand Councilwoman Pappin saying, well, we've got more time, but if, if we all want to see that language and say, yes, that's true, or no, and you wrote something that's not true, that has to be changed, we could do it publicly at the meeting on not true, that has to be changed, we could do it publicly at the meeting on the 25th.
Ms. Pappin, and then after that, Ms. Vice Mayor.
This is not really a public, you know, it's going to reach the public one way or another, and I think council members would be happy to give input on that, but it's not required, I don't believe, as being suggested here. Again, we can pass this on as to the going to the voters and just wait on the other part to decide at a future date, and just overcomplicating everything there. It's just...
The objective is for the city council to take a position?
He did take a position.
To take a position on the argument, or not. And if you don't, then any member of the public...
And do it.
And if we're, I mean, if we're not prepared to do that, I'd ask if there was a way to rescind my vote in favor, because if there's a way to rescind, and since we're still on the item, because if we can't convince ourselves to actually do this, or even agree to draft an argument in favor, it doesn't vote well for us to be able to convince the public to actually support it, if we don't support it in a way that encourages and shows leadership in drafting the argument. So, if someone can speak to whether or not that's even possible, but I would definitely love to rescind, because I don't understand how we have individuals that are carrying this and pushing this forward, but don't want to go on the record to support it in a way that encourages the community.
Okay, can I try one more time here?
Yes.
Okay. When I get propositions or measures, if there's no argument for or against, I vote no, because I don't know what it's about. So, if, and we have somebody here who didn't support it, so I can understand that, Mayor, will you sit with me and we will draft something up by our next council meeting, please?
Yes.
I'm begging here. Okay, great. We are set.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, it doesn't have to...
Yeah, it doesn't have to come back. It goes straight to the city attorney, right?
I'm just trying to be transparent.
If a majority of the city council puts the faith in two other council members, that's the objective.
And it goes to the city attorney.
Yes. So, that works. We have the mayor...
So, we have two council members who are willing to...
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so this, I don't think we need to vote on the appointment of those two council members.
No, well, it's a part of the resolution.
Part of the resolution.
It is part of the resolution. We will put it in the resolution.
Okay.
Okay.
So, done.
But now, you have to vote on this resolution.
Oh.
Please, we need a motion, and a second, and a vote.
Councilmember Schneider, would you like to... We got a motion from Ms. Pappin?
I was trying to find the right language.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Snyder?
Yes.
Councilmember Pappin?
Yes.
Councilmember Cahalan?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Goodman?
Aye.
Mayor Feng?
Aye. The City Council adopted a resolution ordering submission of a measure on term limits at the November 5th general election, and setting priorities for filing arguments for and against the ballot measure, as well as appointing Mayor Feng and also Councilmember Snyder to write the argument and rebuttal.
Thank you.
Passed by a vote of 5-0, sorry.
Thank you. That concludes item number 12. We have no new business, and here comes council comment. Here's what the council adopted protocol states. I'm just going to state that to the public here, and also for the benefit of this council. Council comments and council members serve as representatives to various committees and other counties and regional entities. The council comments section of this agenda provides council members the opportunity to briefly comment on council businesses, city operations, city projects, and community events, and other matters. The comments of each council member shall be limited to five minutes, and I would just say that this is what sets in the protocol, and it's my goal to respect all my colleagues, just as the same expectation that I want my colleagues to respect the protocol that we have adopted. I'm not here to turn off anybody's mic, because we're representative of our people. It's not my goal to turn off your microphone. So, all I'm asking is that we be respectful to ourselves and to the duty that we uphold. So, who would like to go first?
Can you... Is that on the agenda, or is that just on your script?
This is on my notes.
On your notes?
Correct, because this is part of the adopted...
Then, could you read it again?
It's actually on the...
I understand that. I'm asking for the purpose of us moving forward, I ask that you read it again.
It is written on the agenda, Mr. Mayor.
Not the extended version that he just stated.
I can read it again, which is the same as what I had read last time.
Right. Does the council allow to go outside of that?
Council comments. Council members serve as representatives to various committees and other counties and regional entities. The council comments section of the agenda provides council members the opportunity to briefly comment on council businesses, city operations, city projects, community events, or other matters. The comments of each council member shall be limited to five minutes.
Thank you.
All right, who would like to go first? Councilmember Anne Schneider?
Seems to be my night. I'm sorry, I'm happy to let others... Okay. One Shoreline, and this is more to the public than to us, One Shoreline is a JPA. Every city is a member of it. We are part of the northern category, or the northern area of that, and our representative is Mayor Donna Colson of Burlingame. One Shoreline has been working on a solution to sea level rise. Now, most of, the highest-risk community in San Mateo County for sea level rise is Burlingame, followed by Redwood City, followed by Millbrae. The solution that One Shoreline came up with was basically build a wall with movable gates, so that depending on high tide, low tide, we can do that. The wall, as it was drawn and shown at their staff, at their meetings, was right next to Millbrae, basically cutting off right where our, the current Bayfront Park is, and cutting it off right there. So, in time, it would silt up, and we would have no access to water from Millbrae on that. As our sort of official representative to One Shoreline, because I attend those meetings, but I'm not a voting member, so really, I get two minutes, like anybody else from the public on that. We protested that. It came back at the, not this past, but two meetings ago, they voted to do a series of public outreach meetings in Millbrae and Burlingame. Now, historically, what they have done is had the meetings in Burlingame, so in my comments, I had pushed to make sure that we have meetings in Millbrae on that. Staff got back to me, or staff got to me yesterday and asked if I would participate in a Zoom meeting. I don't know city manager if this is something we would like, Mr. Batista, or whichever staff member is working on that. It would be a one-hour Zoom meeting, really, just to identify how they might outreach into the city of Millbrae. So, I'm just throwing that out there, that that might be a series of meetings happening. At the same time, a few weeks ago, I wrote to the greater environmental community that are very active at One Shoreline meetings advocating for nature-based solutions as opposed to hardware-based solutions on that. And I know that sounds like very jargon, but basically, it's build a wall or use wetlands and natural ciltation to provide the protections. Either way, the current program with One Shoreline forgets what we want to do on the east side, and how what happens at the shoreline impacts the flooding of Bayside Manor or Landing Lane, et cetera, et cetera. So, I had talked to the city manager about hosting some kind of meeting. Sadly, I'm not hearing back from the Enviros on that, where they could bring in ideas. I was able to attend a Bay Estuary Conference virtually a few years ago, where they brought in drawings where they're using nature-based solutions in Oakland, especially for West Oakland that has been cut off from the bay, and it's really exciting stuff. So, I just want to throw that out there, that this is something that the Zoom meeting will probably happen in July. I've offered to take their staff on a tour of Bayfront Park, so they can see what it looks like here in Millbrae, and High Line Canal, and the potential area for the Bay Trail, because it's not solving one problem, it's trying to solve a multitude of problems on that. So, I'm just letting you all know, and maybe we can get this public comment period in the fall on that. But I will, if any of you have, that's a Brown Act. I have my own ideas of how we can try to make this accessible to the people of Millbrae on that, but I would love to hear from staff how we can do that and work with our own PIO team, and make sure that the people of Millbrae know this is trying to solve a problem, but it could fix a lot of the problems that happened in the past when the county took away our bayfront to give to SFO. So, there could be some things we could get a piece of our soul back. There we go.
Thank you. Councilmember Pappin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay. As was noted by one of the speakers here, the Bay Area Housing Finance Authority passed a resolution to put on the ballot a bond measure for housing. It's a $20 billion bond. It will go to the voters in each of the nine Bay Area counties to decide. It will be a majority vote of all those counties, so if it doesn't do well in San Mateo County, we may be outvoted. So, we have to be... It is, again, the details will be presented to the voters as this progresses. It will not, again, just stating for the record here, it does not impact the constitutionality of Article 34, as was stated earlier. That's just a fact there. But again, it will go to the voters on the ballot, and another measure which was proposed was a transportation measure, funding for transportation, which failed. And it is currently being discussed further at MTC and also legislatively. So, there's more to come on that front. It'll be discussed tomorrow at MTC as well. I do ask that we try to prepare letters of support for funding of major projects here in San Mateo County. One was the 10184 interchange, which is feeding into the Redwood City Port, and it is just a spaghetti mess. It is very close to really coming together there, and letters of support would be helpful there, also the Broadway grade separation. In addition, there was a meeting with the mayor, myself, the city manager, and the chamber representatives. We're looking, the mayor has requested a meeting of the businesses to help elect a board of directors for the chamber to move forward. Again, our concerns are our lack of transparency, lack of communication, but as was stated by one of our speakers, too, there is a new call-in number on the website for the chamber, so if anybody has questions there, the meeting we were hoping, or I'm still hoping, is sometime this week, and an invitation will go out to all the businesses to participate and decide on, let them elect a board. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Cahalan?
Oh, I'm sorry, wait, one...
Hold on.
One... Almost forgot that. And please, road closures by our developers. It is important that messages go out to residents. It was quite a mess this last weekend with Rollins Road being closed, part-tie, I mean, just, it was a disaster back up on Millbrae Avenue everywhere. We cannot, it just can't be allowed here, but there has to be warnings, there has to be signage. It was all the way back onto El Camino, so if we can, I don't know where this happens here, but we do have to inform our residents and actually put up warning signs or detours if things like this happen in the future. Thank you.
Done? Thank you. Councilmember Cahalan?
I'd like to congratulate the city on the Fourth of July event. It was really wonderful. I echo the comments that folks have made, just people were having such a good time, enjoying themselves, enjoying the food, the music, all the games. You know, and we had Juneteenth last month, which was a fantastic event, so beautiful. I think one of my favorite moments from that event was there was three young children's siblings when we did the flag raising, and as they were getting ready, one of the kids said, "Mom, Mom, make sure you get a video, are you ready, are you ready?" And you could just tell it was a really meaningful, important moment to watch that for them. And just another event in the park early in June, the graduation party. Overall, I'm getting just such incredible feedback from folks who are really enjoying the events in the park, talking about how perfect it is to just sit and relax on the lawn, that the kids can play in the park while the parents relax and enjoy the music, and having the food trucks there. Really wonderful having Millbrae businesses, the Smasher's truck is a Millbrae business, Bock is a Millbrae business, and I know even some of our band members are Millbrae residents, so just, I look forward to more events in the park. Our communities are really enjoying them. The, with the SFO Roundtable, the ground-based noise study began, I believe, the end of last week, and we, so this is a special study, we have four additional temporary monitors. One of those temporary monitors is right at the airport, one is in Burlingame, and we were supposed to have two in Millbrae. I worked with the noise department staff at the airport, and we actually have three in Millbrae. There was kind of a gap area that was going to have coverage, and so we worked together. The fifth monitor in the study is not as central in the gap as I was hoping, but considering the limitations, we had staff and the office at the airport, we really worked together to find an additional location for an additional monitor. It's on Ridge... Ridgewood? Ridgewood? Yeah, it's on, so... The, the Harry Tracy and the fire station right here. So, it has pretty good, if you look at that, along with the permanent monitors, it has pretty good coverage over the city. There's a small gap that's not covered in the immediate areas, but there will be pickup from those areas in the monitors.
So, excuse me.
This is just a report out, not...
We can talk offline, I'm just reporting out on...
I may, Mayor, so...
So, could you please, it's important that we maintain order in this chamber? This is council comment, it's not a back-and-forth discussion or a debate. Ms. Cahalan, would you like to finish?
Yes, so that's just the update, it's in progress, and we were able to get an additional monitor to, the goal was to enhance the study and ensure even greater coverage. And then, last item I have is the homeless subcommittee met last week, and we had two items that we discussed. One, we got an update from the county on where they are in the process of their planning for their update and expansion of the hot team, and then we also discussed the feasibility of the parking lot next to 711 to be a partnering with a nonprofit organization for low-income senior housing. So, we had a lot of really creative, interesting ideas for that, and we're looking at doing an initial feasibility study that will come to council soon. Thank you.
If I may, for that time, just for the report, so once we get the parking management plan adopted and approved, and we start to implement paid parking, then we'll be bringing that feasibility study to the city council for development.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the clarification. You finished? Do you have anything further to add? Councilmember Schneider? Thank you for the comment. Mr. Vice Mayor, do you have anything?
Yes, I do, and it will be under your statement of others. And so, I guess it's very easy to be reactionary to accusations, to comments that are made unjust, mean-spirited about you, that impact you, that impact your family. But I won't dignify it with an answer. I wanted to, I wrote all this up just out of frustration, but as I talk to individuals that are close to me and say, "Why don't you do this? Why don't you take information and blurt it out there?" That's not who I am. It's never been who I am, who I was, or who I am at this moment. 30 years ago, I was 21, and you show me a person that's the same person they were 30 years ago, I'll show you a person that wasted 30 years of their life. But what I will say is, everything that was said is inaccurate, it's false. I think it's steeped in what some may call racial politics for decades, for centuries, going all the way back to, you know, Jim Co practices, racial tropes have been a part of our society for some time, and they've impacted all of us. No one has been immune to it. But as it goes with African-Americans, you can go back to the film Birth of a Nation and understand the impact of racial tropes and how it impacts us. This is an example of saying, hey, I don't have anything else to say, but I'll scare the hell out of you, and I'll make him the big bad. Well, I'm sorry, I'm here to tell you, that's not me. Well, I'm sorry, I'm here to tell you, that's not me. That's not who I am. That will never be me. I'm here to, to improve people's lives, make an impact, and that's what I've done, whether we're talking here or anywhere else. I will not attack anyone in response to that, because that is freedom of speech, and I want individuals to, to hold us as elected officials, hold us accountable, because that's your job. But you can't do it recklessly, what we've seen here tonight, what we've seen at our last meeting. What's really dangerous, even more so, is the exposure, I believe it opens our city up to, when we openly and blatantly allow a double standard of how we apply the law and how we apply our practices. And I think that has to be of the utmost importance here, because you can't choose to use ignorance as an excuse. We have council here for a reason that we pay handsomely, and if they are giving direction, it behooves us to listen. Because there was an opportunity to remedy that double standard or the perceived double standard, and we chose to neglect it. That cannot continue to happen. We need to understand the impact of racial politics, of the, the, this society evolving into what we see here tonight, where individuals have allowed social media trolls to get from behind their screen in the computer and get behind a screen in council meetings. There is nothing wrong with making accusations, there is nothing wrong with holding your elected officials accountable, but doing it in a reckless manner, under the guise of an attorney, whether you're disbarred or not, is inappropriate. I've had many certifications, whether it's as a teacher, at backgrounds as a paralegal, as a court employee, as a youth developer, and not once have I ever been arrested, not once have I ever been accused of any type of crime. And so when we allow statements to be made unchecked, it's dangerous, and more dangerous for someone like myself. We cannot continue to allow it. I ask that if council is here, that they work with the city staff, and every time that statement is made, if they make a statement at every council meeting, while we can't respond, we can direct staff to respond. That's the law. Am I correct? That staff is prepared to have a response, to make sure that the city is protected. And as individuals, we do not have to respond, but there is a response, because as we not respond, as if we do not respond, that becomes our history. I want to be able to come to this council, however long the city allows me to represent them, to do so in a way that I don't feel attacked, that I don't feel that I have to go against decorum in order to do the job of our council. To sit there with the title and the authority of mayor, and to allow misrepresentation, to allow blatant double standards, it puts our city at risk, and it makes us all look bad. We have to be better, and that's all I'm going to say. Thank you.
All right. Council comment, it's not a place where we go back and forth on accusations. This is probably likely to have to come back as a gender item to update our protocol at some point. I think that would be the appropriate time and a place for those discussions. So with that, as far as council comment goes, there's been merely references on a meeting with the Chamber of Commerce, and then there had been a meeting with the Chamber of Commerce, and then they had requested a permit to be issued for the Autumn Wine Festival. I will say that the city is committed to working with the Chamber of Commerce to have a successful Autumn Wine Festival coming up. But there's also been call from business community that there needs to be an active and better representation from the Chamber of Commerce, and therefore, I think it would benefit the business community to be engaged, and also at the same time, to perhaps run for representation on the council, on the Chamber of Commerce, so that we can continue to set better policies and support the business community. So I think it's time for us to have a general meeting to be scheduled for the Chamber of Commerce, to elect a board of directors, so that they can set forth the policies and the directions that we'll see to it, that we have a adequate, equitable, and active representation for the business community. And we will work with the Chamber of Commerce moving forward to ensure that there's continued representation and successful organizations of these Autumn Wine Festivals, which is important to our city. PCE and Hot Board has taken the July off, so therefore, hopefully, I will bring back more updates in a future council meeting. So with that, that's the end of the council comment for the night, and I adjourn the meeting at 10:32 PM.